I am calling to order this Board of Education meeting. It is Monday, July 22nd. It is 6:04 PM. Ms. Lampier, can you do the roll call, please?
Sure. Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Print is not here. Ms. Daniels-Williams?
Here.
Mr. Claffey is not here. Ms. Darling?
Here.
Ms. Gilio?
Here.
I'm here. And Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Okay. We also have Dr. Andreid, Mr. Poska, and Mr. Gray in our first official board meeting. Welcome. And our student reps are not here because they're enjoying their summer. So, yeah, that's it.
Thank you. After you do the prayer, Ms. Daniels-Williams, can you lead us in the pledge?
I'm having trouble finding the prayer.
You're in it.
Oh, thank you. I was looking in the wrong place. Okay. Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I was thinking it was funny when we couldn't find the prayer because it always amazes me that we have a prayer in a government meeting. Time for a change. But anyway, that's a topic for another night. First off, tonight, we have a presentation by Applied ABC Special Education Programs. Dr. Andreid, would you mind introducing everybody?
If Mr. Alexander would come forward and Alicia, if you want to have a seat at the table.
Thank you for having us. Feels like I haven't been here in a while.
Yeah.
This is Alicia Varney. She is the clinical-
Executive Clinical Director at Applied ABC.
So, we wanted to come tonight because we've been talking about our programming at McCarthy and the utilization of the space on the first floor, first first floor. So, we have been exploring, you know, what are our opportunities as far as students that we can bring back to our district and bring back as a part of our community. We are still waiting on the alt-school application because there's a couple of things I think we need to button up at McCarthy, even though it's new. And then, once that's done, we'll move forward with that application. However, you know, with the uniqueness of the students, we've, you know, run into challenges on how do we provide the most appropriate and beneficial services to those students. So, for the last two or three years, we've been working with Applied ABC. They've been instrumental in providing support to our schools with staffing from registered behavior technicians to board-certified behavior specialists, as well as some teachers with our staffing shortage. Recently, they have had a clinic in Manchester which they now have K through six approval as a school for special education students, and we currently have some students placed there, making some very positive gains there. So, in looking through the best way to find programming, Alicia and I were talking, and she has a model that she wants to talk a little bit about today on how we can provide some programming to our students. So, I guess I can kind of turn it over to you and let you present that to the board.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for allowing me to come tonight to the board meeting. I appreciate it. So, there is a model that we have used in the past with other school districts that has been very successful where we have a special ed teacher certified in the state of New Hampshire that would be assigned to a classroom, where we would have also registered behavior technicians in the classroom supporting the students. And then, we would also have a board-certified behavior analyst who would be supporting the students in that classroom alongside the teacher where they would be supervising the RBTs and then, of course, supporting programming and behavioral needs in the classroom. Ultimately, what we want to do is we want to partner with school districts to be able to support the students that are potentially in out-of-district placements or struggling in their home schools to really build up those foundational skills in order for them to hopefully, one day, be brought back into their home schools. And so, with that, what we do is we really work very closely with the school district on what those specific needs are for each one of the students that are brought into the classroom. And we talk about the programming, the plan, and everything that we want to put in place, and what our goals are for those students. And really kind of partner together to hopefully build up those skills so that they can begin to access curriculum. They can begin to go out into mainstream classrooms for Unified Arts, or potentially in reading, or math, or, you know, all of those classroom settings, so that they can become part of the Nashua community, which ultimately is what's really important for a lot of these students, especially ones that are already placed in out-of-district. They don't have that community sense in Nashua, and we really want to bring that back to the table and give them that opportunity. And so, part of our programming would be going out into the community, learning skills so that when they are older, they're able to get a job and function within our community.
And when we last met and we talked about kind of where we were programming, you know, we are going to start this at the middle school level, so focusing on next year, four to five students, I believe, is what we would be looking at. They would be right there, McCarthy, having the staffing ratio as small as it would be. These are kids that we really hope that, you know, get up into the community as much as possible. Also, the overall support and opportunities that Alicia's team would bring would also help bring some, you know, professional development to some of our staff and support, some of our paras and some of their needs and training as well. So, it's a great opportunity to carry over.
Thank you. I didn't want to interrupt and assume you were done. Comments, questions, Ms. Gilio?
I just have a quick question. When you mentioned which school year this would start at, am I being optimistic that we're going to start a month from now when school opens, or are we talking about a year from August?
We're talking about a month from now.
Okay, great.
That is our plan would be in the next couple of months. I think that it's, you know, obviously, within the- Talk about it tonight. We walk through the other pieces. Then, the games can actually happen. And Alicia, they're pretty good in staffing, so they would be able to- Build that. We would build it as the staffing was there. So, we would be looking to start.
That's wonderful because that's a part of what we planned for McCarthy Middle School, and it's nice to see something happening so soon.
I think one of the other things, too, is look at, and Alicia and I have talked about, school being the entire kind of day. So, we would have the RBTs on the buses, help the kids learn to ride the bus. Like, this is really experience of the whole school day, so it's helping them, you know, we can do- I have some of our students. Bussing can be a challenge, so this would be an opportunity for them to-
Raymond?
Thank you. I really wish Ms. Print was here this evening because she's spoken at previous meetings about the impact of her students in her classroom, about these, like, push-out services and then coming back in, and how impactful that was in just a few months. So, I wish I had her expertise tonight. But my question is on costing, because I think we all agree that having our kids in our community is best for them, provided they get the services that they need. Is it also best for the taxpayers?
So, I don't know how much Dr. Andreid wants me to kind of divulge on that, but, you know, I think the last time we talked, our average out-of-district cost per student is around $200.
A year.
A year. And that is only the educational cost. That is not including transportation. That is a separate budget piece, and how that gets acted out is not-
Right.
You'll see the contract that would come forward from Applied ABC. I believe in what we've discussed, it would be probably, we're talking about a staffing ratio of four to five students with three or RBTs, a teacher and a BCBA who comes in overseas, that the cost per student would be about that.
Oh, wow. Okay.
So, I think we're providing better programming at a lower cost.
I don't know if you could discuss the difference between a behavior technician and a behavior analyst?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So, a registered behavior technician is one that carries out the programming that is designed and supervised and overseen by a board behavior specialist. The RBT needs to go through training. They need to complete a 40-hour course that goes over all of the basic principles of ABA, and then, they have to sit for an exam and go through competencies with their BCBA. And then, they also need to have ongoing supervision from a BCBA where they have to do at least 5% of supervision of the hours that they directly work with the students, where the BCBA is basically the one that is creating and supporting and supervising the RBT and the programming for each of the students that they are working with. And so, you know, they're looking at behavior, they're analyzing the behavior, they're coming up with programming for the behavior. And then, in addition to that, they're also in communication with the teacher as far as the academic piece, and really supporting how to best teach the student based off of their individual needs. And a BCBA has to have their masters, and then, they have to sit for a board exam and pass the boards. They have to have 1,500 hours of onsite. I'm trying to think of the word. I just, yeah. I mean, onsite training, but basically, in the field, working for 1,500 hours. And then, once they pass the exam, then they become a board-certified behavior analyst. And as of right now, in the state of New Hampshire, they don't require a license, but I foresee that happening soon.
So, you're saying that the behavior technicians get 40 hours of training and they have to pass an exam?
That is, and a competency, yep. So, they have to go through all of the competencies that they're required to basically showcase that they're able to pass all of these areas. And then, once they get through their competencies, then they can submit an application to the BACB where they can apply to then sit and pass the exam.
How do the competencies work? How are those, how do they display their knowledge of those?
Yep. So, there's various modalities of them, but basically, the BCBA is working directly with the RBT where they're specifically sitting with them, and they're going through each point within the competency so that they can show that they actually know how to do it. So, for example, if we're talking about a specific teaching model and you're talking about discrete trial training, they're actually doing discrete trial training, and they're showing the BCBA that they're able to do it.
And you said that 5% of what they do during the day needs to be observed?
Correct.
So, that means that 95% of what they do is not observed?
It's going to be observed by the classroom teacher. So, you know, we have to remember that we're in a classroom, the special ed teacher is still in charge of their special ed programming, but the BCBA is coming in to support and be able to allow these students to access their curriculum because a lot of them have a lot of interfering behaviors that, you know, don't allow them to do that. And so, that's where the BCBA is really going to come in.
Supervision.
So, you talked about that the parent professionals will get some training. What about, will any of our regular classroom teachers get any of that training as well?
So, those will be things that we will, you know, support naturally, probably, because we have the program at McCarthy, and we can have students that will be transitioned back into the building. Then, that program, the staff would be working, support, train, the- Classroom staff, the team. Whatever it might be to help, help incorporate that team back into our ongoing support coordination.
Which ones of our, which schools of ours are you currently in?
So, as far as RBT support- And BCBA's classroom, teachers supporting, we have nights, teachers on home street, we have RBTs in North. Kind of mixed around. You know, currently, we have some supporting our personal focus.
Thank you.
Ms. Raymond?
So, is this a contract that you're looking for us to approve tonight? Because I didn't see it in the packet. So, what's the next step?
No. So, as Mr. Alexander said, we still need McCarthy to be approved as a school. We still need the alternate plan, ultimate program application to be approved. But at our last conversation where we talked about the alternate program application, there was a lot of questions. So, we promised the board we would come back and have a presentation on what we were thinking. So, tonight is just a presentation as we move forward with the McCarthy certifications and the application to the program. We'll develop a contract or an RFP that will lead into a contract, and then, we'll come back to financing operations for approval, and then, back to the full board. And hopefully, that'll all be done in a month.
That's plenty of time to get it all done.
Best of luck to everyone. But I think even if it isn't done exactly for when school starts, it sounds like these are students who have a plan for September, but then, we would be looking for their parent or guardian to be amenable to, you know, changing it as things go forward.
I think it's been a while, you know, like I said, work with each other on the self-vetification speech. She came out for vacation the other day.
Oh, thank you.
Next week to set up a time for her to go and see the space in McCarthy and her clinical director, so they can see that space. So, we'll talk about the space, talk to Dr. Sparza as well, to, you know- Introduce, so that she has that, but we'll talk a little bit more about what we have here. Although, we've worked this as a separate entity, it's still a Dr. Sparza building and her personnel. Because, well, he's our social coordinator, then, you know, all of his offices as well. So, we want to make sure everybody's there, open that stuff, and she'll be there. Folks, you can't get our contract to us. And Mr. Gray, if you'll do, if I can, if you're home, if none of you's to you. And then, make sure everything is, but, but, um, so.
Got another follow-up?
Yes, and then, Ms. Daniels-Williams.
Oh, I'm sorry. I can wait. Oh, so, my follow-up was just about, as we get further on to the, along and students are identified, how does that work with families? Do you initiate a new IEP meeting? Do the parents have the, like, have the right or the opportunity to view the space so that they feel comfortable? Like, how does that part of it work?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So, we have had some initial conversations about how to handle that, and it's been close to office use. We put this on our side, we're supporting, we're talking about some conversations. And then, yes, what we do is, we search, talk to the team to, you know- Have those meetings. You know, see the student, their environment, all of that. So, it's really a smooth transition. I think that's a very good communication. Dot com. Just to piggyback off of what Ms. Raymond was saying, that was my question.
Are these four to five kids going to be kids that are already in our district? Are they going to be coming back from our, from further districts to our district?
See, you'll have to understand, I have to be careful confidentiality with students and giving, giving too much information out because that could make children identifiable to the public. So, I have to be really careful about that. But I'm just trying to, you know, look at that we're targeting four to five students that are in this level of need right now.
Okay. Because I'm just understanding that my question is that, like, I know that this is going to be a school within a school, and looking at how we've run our other schools within schools, they're kids from other districts, not from our district. So, I wanted to make sure whether this was actually going to be a tuition-type thing or if this was going to be someone that we were going to help within our Nashua district.
So, students within our Nashua district, and I'm sure I'll be back in October because I've already received phone calls from colleagues when we talk about programming like this because we are, we are doing, you know, some really good work with our programs in district. So, I know there's, there's already been interest from other colleagues when we talked about the school within a school kind of format. So, and I, as I said, Brentwood, our Signs of Learning programs was our two stars that we get calls on all the time, and we're constantly getting calls and meetings on those two programs as I believe we will.
I say, Ms. Daniels-Williams made me think of a question. For our others, like Brentwood and Signs of Learning, does preference go to our own students first?
Always.
Okay.
Lampier?
My question is, my question is actually the opposite of Ms. Daniels-Williams. I know that some parents of children with severe disabilities, they have to fight really hard to get out-of-district placement for their children. And the parents who have kids that are out of district right now, if they would prefer to leave their kids in out-of-district placement, will they have that option? Or will the school say, no, we have this program, and you need to come back?
So, I'll refer back to the special education process for that. It's a team decision.
What, could you describe the process?
The process is a team meeting, and the team discusses what the options for placement are, presented to the parent and family, and then, we work to come up with a resolution that's in the best interest.
If the parents disagree with the, with what the administration believes is in the best interest, would that be, how would that be settled?
I just want to clarify. So, it's, the district's proposal is not administration, it's a district proposal. So, so there is a process that is outlined in the special education regulations, and if a parent disagrees on what their process is to disagree with that, there are steps to work towards resolution. But I'd always have the most positive, you know, outcome of that that is, you know, the least stressful. And every child during a process of disagreement is what is called stay put. They stay in the environment, and the IEP stays in place for the last agreed-upon IEP in placement until such time a decision is-
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just had a question about, I'm not sure how many students we have in out-of-district placement, but I'm sure it's quite a number. And I'm just wondering how you go about selecting the students that you think would fit into this kind of program? I mean, that sounds like a lot of work. I don't, I don't want any confidential information, but just, is there a process that's really simplified, or does it, is it really complicated?
I wish it were simplified, right? I mean, because of this programming being six through eight, we're looking at our middle school, right? So, like, that helps us narrow kind of that field. If we were here talking about K through 12, then we would be really, like you said, looking at a very different process, and what are the needs of the students, what are the profiles of students that are going to best fit, kind of that milieu, because you want to make sure that the kids and the staff are able to work collectively together and see how the program starts to build and go from there.
Thank you.
Ms. Daniels-Williams?
So, I have a question. So, we're looking at bringing four to five this year. What is the total number that we can hold over to the alternative wing at McCarthy?
I guess that depends on what, you know, we as a district talk about as far as the use of that space. You know, we did, when we originally came, we talked about it being elementary as well. So, you know, I believe that we could, based on, I believe, there's four classrooms, one being quite oversized, kind of a two-classroom model down there. I mean, just on pure space, you know, I believe we could have, you know, roughly around 40 students there. I think that's a, that's a huge goal. That's a huge undertaking. That's a lot to really look at, and I don't, I don't believe I'm targeting or looking at that or thinking about that at this time. Something that we would want to potentially look at, grow, what's the most, you know, effective use of the space, our staffing, make sure we grow it appropriately. Getting too big, too fast isn't always the best thing. Starting with the one classroom model right now, I think is a really nice strategy.
And also, I just have one more side question about that. We had talked about maybe possibly training the teachers. So, what does that look like, and can that definitely be part of the proposal? Because that would be important for our district, right? And that would help a lot of the special education things, maybe even, you know, allow us to be able to always need the company because we need the BCBA, and, you know, they're amazing. They have statistics, and they count up everything. I'm very familiar with the process, so I'm very encouraged that we sought out someone and brought them in. I'm loving that part. But what does it look like preparing our teachers to do that if they had an interest or an incentive?
Yeah, I think Dr. Andreid talked about that, the economy of scale, and how do we utilize what we have to train our folks? Something that, you know, because they'll be running the same schedule we will for, for kids. So, their staff, you know, wouldn't be operating on the days when we don't have school and PD days, election days, those type of things. Put into that contract as far as what can they offer for training and or mentoring.
And I think it's going to happen naturally, too, right? When you start to have some of these kids go out into mainstream classrooms, you know, we're going to want to support the teachers that they're going into their rooms and that background and that professional development so that they can support them, so that the student can generalize the skills that they've been taught, you know, in their classrooms. So, I think naturally, and then, yes, we can come up with a plan as far as anything else.
Definitely, very encouraging.
Lampier?
I'm sorry. I have, I promised this would be my last question. We'll be getting some teachers from your, from your business here, and I was wondering, because I know that the public school teachers and teachers in charter schools, et cetera, they have different certification levels and everything. So, I was wondering, you know, how that, how that compares, your teachers versus our teachers, their certifications and experience and stuff like that.
I'm going to jump in quickly and just say that every teacher that we contract or have contracted with is required to have or be eligible for certification in the state of New Hampshire and have at least a statement of eligibility working towards that certification. So, anybody we ever have contracted with any agency, including, has been under the New Hampshire. Talk about your actual teacher certification.
Yeah, absolutely. So, we actually do invite the district to hold interviews for any teacher that we bring forward that would be supporting in Nashua. So, we like to involve the building personnel, and then, of course, Dan is also involved. And I want them to be a part of that decision-making because ultimately, they're going to be working in the schools, and I want, you know, whoever's coming in to feel as part of the community. I don't want them to feel as though they're separate from their programming. But yes, all of our teachers are certified teachers and follow the same guidelines that it would for Nashua School District.
Well, thank you so much for that presentation. It was very helpful and educational for us. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And I, we don't have enough time. Mary Crystal was going to be speaking to the, what were you going to be speaking to?
The not-
Right. The not, the handbook. But she needs to go down to the BOA meeting to get our food service contract approved. So, we were trying to see if we could get it both done, but have your hand downtown. Okay. All right. So, back to the agenda, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
To Raymond, seconded by Ms. Gilio. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Motion passes. Up now, up, excuse me, up now is first public question comment period. Mr. Johnson? Is there anybody signed up for the first one?
There is.
Excellent. Couple of meetings where nobody's taken the bait. Couple of meetings where nobody's taken the bait. This is exciting. We haven't heard from people in a while. Okay, so we have one, two, three, four, five folks on, three minutes each. That should bring us right up to 15 minutes, but if we go along, we'll just need a motion to extend. The first one, Lydia Welch, Welsh?
Linda Walsh.
It's what?
Linda, it's okay.
Linda, is this on? I just, it's so hot when I put my glasses on, I actually feel like I'm sweating, so I just don't like them yet. I apologize. Okay, continue on, sorry about that.
Thanks. Linda Walsh, 207 Manchester Street. I've been a Penechuk teacher for 23 years. I'm here to talk about the redrawing of the redistricting lines tonight. Teachers are really frustrated that we are this long into the process and we are still making major changes like this. And I'm so frustrated about it, but someone has to address the Hindenburg in the room, and it's pretty effective to us. You were asked to build a new school that was going to house a certain amount of students, and you did this, yet McCarthy is going to be partially empty in September. You paid thousands and thousands of dollars for a redistricting plan through a consulting firm, which you did, and this plan was there to ensure equitable population of all three middle schools. The plan has already been ignored, we have had more kids added to our schools, and tonight you are here to discuss adding more students to our school. The mistakes made in this middle school project have been financially irresponsible and have been massively problematic. And keep in mind that the outcome of these problems is not going to rest on the Board of Education, nor will it involve Central Office, and nor will it involve building administrators. You've made plans for our building administrators to have an additional person that will take care of them, but we've done nothing to help the teachers in our building to be supported in these massive amount of changes that you've made. You have not supported our struggles nor listened to our input. There's been nothing. You've cut and cut and cut, and you expect us to bear the burden of these cuts alone, and that is not right. What's more is that the added impact of the mistakes you have made during this planning process for the middle school transition is falling directly on our students, and that is not okay as well. You did not build Penechuk to be the largest school, you built McCarthy for that. You added classrooms to Penechuk, you did not widen the hallways, you did not increase the size of the gym, you did not account for enough space at lunches, you did not account for arrival and dismissal traffic, or where students will stand before the bell rings in cold weather. You threw away our extra furniture, leaving with us not enough, you didn't add additional lockers, you didn't add support service, basically anything. We get an email from our principal on Friday that we're now going to be discussing at this school board, adding many more additional students. You added classrooms to us, and I want you to remember that you did not build a new school in Penechuk. It looks fantastic, but they are literally classrooms. Everything else is the same. That's quite hard to understand why we're at this problem right now. I get that you're concerned about fairgrounds class sizes, but simply shifting class size problem from fairgrounds to Penechuk is not a better answer. Class size is not just about volume, it's about demographics. They have to be considered together. Any teacher can handle a group of students who is ear to learn and cooperative, coming from supportive families and who listen and follow classroom instructions. This is why lecture halls exist at colleges. It is not about volume, it needs to be factored in with student demographics. What impacts classroom management more than any other single thing is classroom behavior. Both statistically and experientially, that is strongly tied to demographics. This is precisely why we hired a consultant to make equitable lines across the city to ensure schools were socio-economically balanced. Your decisions to ignore these lines and redraw them sets Penechuk up to be the most socio-economically disadvantaged middle school in the district. It not only affects the teachers, but also the children in every class. I'm going to skip because I heard my three minutes was up, I should have brought four more people to yield their time. Regardless of your decision tonight, teachers will respectfully be asking for acceptable avenues for teachers to be involved and heard more at the district level so that we can get the proper support we need. We would like to make efforts to communicate directly with the board privately or through the union during the next year as we go through this massive transition and manage the fallout from all of the decisions and all of the new burdens for us to bear. You'll be hearing from teachers within the next few weeks about suggestions that you can help support us in the classrooms after these decisions impact our students and our working conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Hoffman?
Gary Hoffman, 38, Perham Street, Nashua, New Hampshire. I'm also the president of the Nashua Teachers Union. First thing I would like to bring up is Policy IL, and it's Evaluation of Instructional Programs. The last time it looks like that this policy was looked at was May 12, 2008. And essentially, it just says that the superintendent will evaluate our instructional practices and see if we're attaining our educational goals and report their findings to the school board at least once a year. The new language, you know, and we have to think beyond, you know, what's it going to be? It's been 16 years since we looked at this, and it just says "will" from time to time. I think it's important to put some sort of time identification in there. If it were up to me, I would strengthen that language. And in the second sentence, instead of its current language, I would simply say, "The superintendent shall have the responsibility to report at least annually to the Board of Education." I think once a year is plenty, you know, from time to time, I don't know what that is, you know? It's kind of nebulous, you know? Regarding what Linda said with the middle school redistricting plan, I have some similar concerns with it. If you remember, I came, you know, in February, I came in March, I came in May, and I said, you know, we got to look at these class sizes. When the March 11 class size projections were made, one of the proposals were that, you know, the fairgrounds numbers did look big at the time, they're basically what we have now, you know, 27, 28 a class in sixth and eighth grade. The proposal at the time is we were going to add teachers to fairgrounds, not kind of, not take them from, move kids to Penechuk. I know it might be too late to do this now, but we are evaluating the changes to the middle schools. You know, I know Ms. Daniels Williams is meeting with the union in about a week and a half to discuss this. I think this board needs to consider, you know, for next year's budget, adding some teachers to fairgrounds and maybe moving some of these students back from Penechuk. I do think it's an important goal to have similar free and reduced lunch levels at all three middle schools. And the best solution to this problem was what was originally proposed in March, which was adding teachers to fairgrounds. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Pamela Johnson?
I'm Paula Johnson.
Paula. How many graces?
You should know my name.
I did. You know what?
I'm glad you put your glasses on. Maybe you should have kept them off.
I should have kept them off and just looked in the audience.
There you go. Good evening, members of the Board of Education. My name is Paula Johnson, former member, sat over there, sat over there. I remember back in 2023 regarding this redistricting, I think it was around June when it came before this board. I think I was one of the ones that complained about this redistricting, that there was a lot of students going to Penechuk and not enough students going to the brand-new middle school, which I had the honor of seeing the other night. I think it's a beautiful Taj Mahal. My question is, the members of the board that's on Joint Special School Building Committee and Rick Dowd, didn't anybody go back and look at the projections that I talked about every time the budget came? I asked about the projections in the school district. Obviously, nobody did. That Penechuk will have more students in a brand-new school than we built because we had to equalize everything across the board, which we knew could never be equalized with the amount of students because of the areas and the homes that were being built. But nobody probably looked at the redistricting plan again. When Mr., what was it? Mr. Smith, I believe his name was, who did the redistricting plan? Preston Smith, that's right, my memory came back. He sat in this audience, and people squawked at him, and I agreed with him because I grew up in a big city. And in a big city, you don't raise kids in apartments. As a matter of fact, I talked to Mr. Sullivan about that, that spoke about it on Thursday night. And people were talking about, well, can we add bedrooms to an apartment? It doesn't work in this demographic. Maybe in New York it would, but not in Nashua. People, when they move into this area, want a home for their kids. They don't raise kids in apartments. These apartments going up is going to be equal to what we call the 15-minute cities, if you look about that. Everything's within 15 minutes to work, to walk to, to buy your clothing, to do everything. That's what we're building for. We're not building to bring kids into the district here. We're building to bring younger people in here that chances are will never have kids, and if they do, they will move out of Nashua because there's no homes. There is nothing on the market right now. So we built this beautiful school, and we, the taxpayers, are going to flip this bill for a 30-year bond on probably a three-quarter to a half-empty school. And I sat on this board, I wasn't part of this whole building of this new middle school, and I sat on Joint Special for one year during COVID, but you couldn't do anything because all we did was Zoom and you couldn't read the information and get answers. This is an outrage, and everybody in this city should be outraged about this school. We heard from a teacher at Penechuk and Mr. Hoffman, which we're good friends now. I left this board being very good friends, we see eye to eye on things. But everybody should be upset because the cost factor here, and we're not going to be having the school filled the way it should be. Beautiful school, but I'm a homeowner. I've paid taxes in this city for 40 years in this one home and two years in another home. For 42 years, I've paid taxes whether I've had kids in school or not. And so it's about time accountability and from the Joint Special School Building Committee to tell the residents of this city what went wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. See how badly I can do this. Joy Simone?
Joy.
Simeone. I watched TV this weekend, no blaming on that.
Good evening. I'm Joy Simeoni. I live at 15 Bay Meadow Drive in Nashua, and I will be starting my 29th year teaching at Penechuk this year. And as everybody has pointed out this evening, we're a month away from starting school. A month. And all of a sudden, all of our class lists are in flux. We don't know who we're going to have. Our classrooms are growing. We're not ready, but we're supposed to be ready. And this is an absolute mess. And it's a mess because this board waffled. A decision was made, the redistricting committee made a decision. I sat on the redistricting committee. The decision that was made was even. Teachers, three teams, three teams in each grade. And then we moved the boundary because some parents complained. They wanted their children to stay as a group. The board waffled, went back on its decision and said, oh, okay, well, we'll just move that line. No, who bore the brunt of that? Penechuk. But also teachers. That's when the staff reduction at McCarthy happened. Now there are two teams per grade, plus all the special programs. But we still have three teams. And, you know, as Linda said, yes, we have classrooms. I have a beautiful classroom. I'm in one of the new classrooms. Dr. Andre and Mr. Poska visit me regularly in my classroom. It's beautiful. I can't get out until the first day of school. I can't get near it because they're still putting a new system to try to cool down the building. So I don't have access to my room until the first day of school, and you should see it, it's a mess. I can't get in there to plan for my kids. Now I don't even know how many kids I'm going to have. And oh, by the way, I have a brand-new team. We have never worked together before. So we have all of these things to do, and now you're telling me that you're going to change the line again because, oh, maybe there might be more kids immigrating into the city. Well, we talked about that, but it's okay, just stuff I meant to Penechuk. As Linda said, there is no place for our school to meet at once. Yes, I have a beautiful classroom, and the D-wing hallways are very wide, lots of room for kids to pass, but not in the old wings. The traffic jams are going to be unbelievable, just getting kids to move around the building. We don't know how much time that's going to take. And we also know that teachers keep the kids. My classroom has no problems. I manage kids very well, but I can't manage them when they leave to go to band, or go to tech ed, or go to world language. That's where all the problems occur, in the hallways. We can't manage that when there are too many kids. As it is now, we're not going to be able to let kids carry their backpacks. I think it's a good thing. We didn't do it on my team last year, and I think it works very well. But there's just not enough room. There's not enough room for every kid to go to their locker at the same time, and all of the kids pass classes at the same time. We have no place to meet as a school. How are we going to do promotion ceremony next year? Not the way we did it this year. There's no place for all of these people to meet at one time. Yes, you gave us a little bit more room in our cafeteria for seating, but did you give Joni Swindell any more room to cook? No. Nashua Penechuk Middle School does not have a dishwasher in the kitchen. Everything is done by hand, and it's been that way since that kitchen was built. Everything is done by hand. That's why we use disposable trays. And that's why you can only fit three kids in that line at one time. It's just too tight a squeeze. My principal assures me that they've got a better plan for serving pizza and sandwiches and doing that outside the cafeteria. I hope so.
Just to figure it's been the three minutes.
Wonderful. I'm excited about starting the school year, but I am as nervous as a first-year teacher. And I've been doing this for a very, very long time. And I don't know how I can support all of the new teachers who are going to leave in a very disillusioned manner. How do we even keep teachers? I think that that's something that we need to be talking a lot. And having waffly decisions like this does nothing to improve teacher retention. Thank you.
Now I'm just nervous about reading. Steven Robodell?
Robado.
Robado.
Good evening. Steven Robado, 1 Maywood Drive, Nashua. I'm a teacher, but I'm not here as a teacher. I'm here as a parent. Since those voices seem to hold so much more weight with you guys, you moved the lines of the middle school once already, which resulted in increasing the class size for my daughter next year at Penechuk, while leaving McCarthy, the new multimillion-dollar school, partially unused. Now you want to move another line to increase my daughter's class size again while still not utilizing the new larger building. My daughter should not be penalized for your shortsightedness.
Thank you. I'll hand the floor over to you, Dr. Andre, for superintendent's comments.
Thank you. Tonight, I want to share some important news. So the U.S. Department of Education recognizes the YMCA Power Scholars Academy as an Engage Every Student Champion. The YMCA of Greater Nashua, in partnership with the Nashua School District, has been honored as one of 13 programs across the country recognized as an Engage Every Student Champion for its significant expansions in the Power Scholars Academy program. The champions were acknowledged during the 2024 Engage Every Student Summit in Washington, DC on July 16. The recognition involved a state-level review by teams consisting of educational agencies and after-school networks. The state finalists were recommended to the Department of Education for final review and consideration. There were 57 nominations from 29 states. The YMCA of Greater Nashua, in partnership with the Nashua School District, leveraged the elementary and secondary school emergency relief funding to engage K-12 students in after-school and summer learning. They prioritize preventing summer loss and... after-school and summer learning. They prioritize preventing summer loss in math and aim to foster physical and social-emotional growth through the Power Scholars Academy. The curriculum for the Power Scholars Academy focused on evidence-based literacy and numeracy instruction. Students were assessed at the beginning and end of each five-week term. The students that participated in the Power Scholars Academy assessments have shown an average gain of three-and-a-half months' growth in reading, literacy, and nearly four months in numeracy. So congratulations to everyone in the Power Scholars Academy, especially to Neil Archer and her leadership. Again, thank you so much. This is a great tribute to scholars in their partnerships with the YMCA of Greater Nashua. Excellent work going on this summer, and it was great to be recognized as one of only 13 programs in the country.
Fantastic. Board response to superintendent comments. Any? Raymond?
Thank you. So I love the Power Scholars Academy. I think they do a great job. I'm just concerned about our budget for next year because I know that on the presentation that we had in May from Ms. Fulton with the almost $400,000 that we lost from Title I, that's the money that we had been using to pay for this program. So I just want to put the bug in everyone's ear about creative financing for next year because I would hate to actually lose this program, and I don't think it was in the budget.
More comments? I don't normally do popcorn, but I thought I'd try it out this time. Sometimes I lose control, but people aren't jumping. Okay, we have no student members here, so I will hand the floor over to Ms. Lamphier for Committee on Finance and Operations.
Hi, how was everybody tonight? The first motion I'd like to make is to approve the special education contracts listed on the Finance and Ops memo dated July 9, 2024, under their corresponding accounts. And if I can get a second, I'll go into more detail on that.
I'll second.
Thank you. All right, so we have several different contracts here with several different groups. I'm going to name off the companies first, and then I will go into a little more detail. So Boothby Therapy, which is alternative augmented communication, that's $43,200. The Carroll Center for the Blind, which is orientation and mobility services for visually impaired students, that's two different payments of $96,157 from the IDEA and $24,310 from the operating budget. Here to Learn is an educational, they will provide educational audiology services for the hearing-impaired students. That's $20,475 out of the IDEA grant. Leap Learning will cover an open position for a school psychologist services, $162,000. Regional Services Education Center will cover two open positions for school psychology services. Each position will be $145,275. White Birch Educational Services will provide bilingual psychological evaluations, that's $13,000, and also personally cover an open position for a school psychologist at $99,750. And then Rockingham Contracting and Therapy Services will cover two open positions, speech pathology services for $201,600. As you can see, the fact that we cannot find anyone to apply for a school psychologist or speech pathology positions is costing the district a great deal of money. Out of the grants, out of the money that I just listed, $159,832 will come from the IDEA grant, and out of our operating budget will be $791,210. So yes, that's the information. If anyone has any questions.
Very interesting to hear all of that in the meeting. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, so the second motion tonight, I would like a motion, I'm going to make a motion to approve the agreement that's presented between CPTE Health Group and the Nashua School District to provide athletic training services at Nashua High School North and Nashua High School South for the 2024-25 school year in an amount not to exceed $105,000. School year 2025-26 will be negotiated before December 2024 for an amount not to exceed $120,000, and this will come from accounts 91.1.03140853628 and 91.1.04140853628. Thank you. Now, this is, we had a company that we worked with for a great, a long time, and they were great. They did wonderful work. And when Ms. Jengers first presented the athletic contract a couple of months ago, she said how wonderful these people were and how we were getting these services from much less than we from someplace else. But they decided that they were not going to work with us anymore. I think that they were retired. Yeah, they're retiring. That's exactly why.
And they weren't like peace out.
They weren't upset with us or anything, but they were retiring, so we had to go with a different company. And this company is $40,000 more than what we used to have. But it's still a very good deal for the services they will provide.
Any other comments or questions?
No, I'm just pleased that Ms. Jengers was able to locate someone for us, so thank you.
I know she did some speedy work on that because we have regulations that we have to meet for our kids to do sports. Okay, so any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, the next motion is to approve the fiscal year 24-year-end forecast.
I'll second it. No explanation. What does line 37.2 mean? Okay, so any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the year-end fiscal year, fiscal year 24-year-end forecast, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And finally, and this also, I'm not going to explain, I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 24 June transfer report. Thank you.
Thanks. Comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Ms. Lamphier, I know it's not on here, but would you mind speaking to Mr. Smith's CIP, that big, huge packet that he presented to us in Finance and Ops?
Okay.
Well, it's located within the packet for that agenda, but it highlights all of the projects that are coming up.
Mr. Smith is here if you need.
Yes, please, that would be great because I did not look it over again before I came to the meeting tonight. But at our Finance and Ops meeting, he did present on this, and it was also included in our packet. It's quite extensive explanation of the capital improvements that we are hoping to make over the next 20 years, 30 years, I think.
Fifty.
Oh, 50, sorry. And also, not only they listed by the year that we hope to do them and the amount that it should cost, but also by priority in the city and how we would go about making the decision as to which project we're going to do at what time. So I would suggest that if you were interested in this, you should definitely give it a look. It's really interesting.
Very interesting. Yeah. Yeah, and Sean did a good presentation on what was coming up next.
Yeah, could you give us, could you talk a little bit about where the school falls and what's coming up in the next couple of years?
Sure. So as you're aware, the process is I present the list of projects to you, both deferred maintenance and capital projects. Then you say yes or some feedback, and then we then go to the Capital Improvement Committee. That usually happens in January, although this year it was a little bit late. Then they put together a report. So all the divisions, all the departments in the city give presentations to the Capital Improvement Committee. They then put together a document that lists all the projects that were presented and attempt at a ranking system. So there's kind of, I don't remember the exact titles, but there was a must-do all the way down to we can defer this till later on. And most of our projects did fairly well. The deferred maintenance was listed at the very highest category, but the next one down, along with several other projects, are increasing, we have replacing some security stuff, paving at the north high school is rated highly. Then at the end of that list was the capital projects. So we had Dr. Crisp and New Surles and Bicentennial and Mount Pleasant were in that document. So they're all in the queue, so to speak. We're told, as you heard last Thursday night, they're not planning to do anything major for at least five years. So those projects I mentioned before, the paving, the security stuff, those will likely be taking place in that million-dollar threshold that they mentioned, but everything else is probably going to wait. There was a comment last Thursday about why haven't we looked more harder at Mount Pleasant? I didn't go all the way, but I've been here 27 years, so my archive's pretty extensive, both online and in paper. If you saw my office, you'd see a lot of the paper. But at least in 2015, the administration came forward in that same process I just described and said, you need to do Elm Street, you need to do Main Despleuil, Burchill, and Mount Pleasant. And then the tail end, at least in my memo, said, you need to get Elm Street taken care of, then Mount Pleasant, Main Despleuil, Burchill. So Mount Pleasant's always been in our sights. It's always been on our radar. We've always considered it something we need to do next. I would say that, and it probably goes on before that, certainly the decision that you all made a year ago to just hold off for a while. You wanted two years to decide what to do. So when we did that, we may have kind of missed an opportunity, but I'm not sure because of the approach the city's now taking to cut back on spending. Kind of everything.
Just to, I'll get to you in one second. Just a clarifying point is the deferred maintenance budget that you have is overseen by the city, not by the school district.
Well, the city approves the money as part of the annual budget as a separate number. It was originally $100,000, and then Alderman raised it to half a million dollars. But once we have that money, we control it. I'll bring the projects that are in that deferred maintenance list to you for approval, and then you approve them, and then we go forward.
But it's a kind of separate chunk from the school budget, just for educational purposes?
Yes.
Daniels Williams?
Yes, thank you. I did get a chance to look at the meeting. I did get a chance to hear you reference page 36, so I'm now there. In this document, it says that it was last renovated 1990. I do understand that the end of 1998, some things were done there, per se, to the roof or whatever. I'm not sure. But my thing is, you said something really powerful. You said that even though it is in the C section, that it doesn't have to stay there. You said that A, B, and C are interchangeable, that that is just how you place them. So now I want to know, how do we get to C3 on page 36, where two years later? I want to know how we do that because you said it didn't have to go in order, that it didn't have to stay at the bottom, and that they are interchangeable. So they say that you're the judge to ask because you control this. You set up the 50-year plan. You have been controlling it for said years. How do we get an answer, whether it be yes, whether it be no? How do we get an answer? Because we are two years in, and when we asked last time, they said that we had to defer it to you and this plan. So now we have the plan, is on page 36, C3. How do we get to an answer?
Think the first thing you'd have to do, you were considering closing the school a year ago, right? It came up in the conversations, I think. I'm not sure. I could be wrong. But you decided to hold off on the decision for a couple of years. The way to get it higher perhaps is to, as a board vote, renovate the school. That'll go to the Alderman, but then it's up to them. Again, it's money. And if they have to come up to $20 million, they've already told us that they don't think we can do that, where we stand as a city as far as funding goes.
So I guess I second that to say, would you be able to see what would be able to be fixed? We talked about doing the security investables. We talked about making it ADA accessible. We talked about different portions. That doesn't have to include the whole $20 million. Is there a plan that I've missed seeing for that, that we can present to the Aldermen or we can present to the city and stay within the money that they told us last Thursday that we could have?
We have a pretty detailed budget from Harvey Construction that lists all the aspects of that $20 million. We can pull various pieces out. We can say, okay, it's going to cost this much money to do the mechanical system. We know what the security vegetables cost because we bid that out separately just a year and a half ago.
So it would take a vote from this board?
I believe so.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to raise it for a vote.
Raise what?
Raise doing it by pieces, at least starting with the security vessel, and then moving on to making it ADA accessible and all the things that can be broke out of this $20 million because we know that we can't have the $20 million, even if we have to do it piecemeal. It hasn't been worked on since, at least by this document, 1990. I know that Mr. Dowd said that it was that. I understand, Dr. Andre, that you don't want it tonight, but it doesn't have to be tonight.
That's all I was saying. It can't be on a vote tonight. It just needs to be, like, that was just an update, so it could be a future agenda item.
But I'm just saying, I think that
I think I know.
The teachers and everyone, like, it is so much going on with this school, and we said a month ago that we would set a date. We set a date. They pushed it back, pushed it back. Then we went to McCarthy to talk about stuff from the city. I'm just asking for a date. It doesn't have to be today. I mean, I think that we have the information available, and everybody, we have to say yes or say no. I mean, is a board of nine...
But one of the things that we would have to do in order for us to do it your way, which is piecemeal, is we would have to have Harvey come back, relook at what needs to be done. It would be a different price point to do one thing at a time because, you know, like when you're in a car and they say, we've already got your tires off, we might as well just do your brakes. So there's a different cost associated with doing things separately. So we would need to have Sean go back. How would we do that, Sean? We would definitely need Harvey to come back in and do things in some organized over a 10-year period, right?
Say so. To develop bite-sized chunks, yes.
Right.
Have them come in and tell us. I just want to correct one thing. We haven't neglected Mount Pleasant over the years. It was 1990-ish, 1988, somewhere in that timeframe was the last major renovation, comprehensive renovation. But I know we changed the roof probably in the early 2000s. I know we added air conditioning to all the classrooms. Gosh, that was maybe 10 years ago, early teens. So that's all these two things we've done. There was an old dilapidated portable classroom that the neighbors didn't like. We took that out maybe 15 years ago. So we have done incremental things that other, I mean, Bicentennial and Dr. Crisp, New Surles haven't been touched since the mid-'90s, but we've still done incremental things at those schools as well.
Would it be something that could be added to deferred maintenance, these piecemeal things? Because that's what deferred maintenance is positioned in the budget is. So I just am asking the question.
What I heard the other night was, you know, they're talking up to $1.5 million projects. I would think we'd have to get through the next deferred maintenance, the next capital improvement cycle, which is this winter, and present all these projects. City has to then juggle them to decide what to do next. They got to prioritize them. But we're really looking at six months from now, maybe, having a plan together, bringing in Harvey, looking at all the different projects we could do.
Because how many projects within Mount Pleasant are under Because how many projects within Mount Pleasant are under $500,000?
Not many.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. And we have, how many other schools that need to be mandated with that $500,000 every year until the big one comes up?
Four schools I mentioned have needs.
Ms. Raymond?
I have, I have two things. One is a question, which I think is pretty quick. Alderman Dowd had said Thursday about the city had put $350,000 for a facilities review. Does that include Mount Pleasant? So would that answer some of the questions that Ms. Daniels Williams had about specific what they needed?
Yes, if that comes to pass, I think it was, they were looking at year-end money, last year-end money to possibly fund that. And I don't think that's been decided 100% yet.
So we don't know if they passed that particular thing? That was something that was upcoming?
It was almost like a point of negotiation, it sounded like, in future planning.
Okay. All right, I will follow up with Alderman Dowd and ask him.
Yeah.
All right, so and then my other just kind of statement about, about talking about redistricting the elementary schools, because my recollection is that we were talking about redistricting the middle schools. And then we talked about the fact that Bicentennial and Fairgrounds are bursting at the seams because we've had shifts in the demographics of where kids are living in the school, in our city. And that we wanted to ask our consultant and our teams to look at all of the elementary schools to see if we could balance enrollment. Because we have some schools like Broad Street and Mount Pleasant, who have very small class sizes. And then we have some schools like Bicentennial and Fairgrounds that have much larger class sizes. And that our discussion started at, well, how can we make this a little bit more even for our students and for our faculty so that everyone's having an equitable experience? Just kind of the point of some of the comments that we had earlier this evening. So like, how can we apply that to the elementarys? And then the consultant came up with, I think frankly off the cuff, without being asked, the suggestion to close tons of schools. And we at the board said, we're coming out of COVID. Our kids need small classes. We don't want to talk about closing schools until we see some recovery. My recollection wasn't, let's just push this down the road and be willy-nilly about it and leave everybody up in arms. Nobody had talked about, at the beginning of the discussion, closing schools. Like, it came out of our request to balance the schools. Now, at this point, I don't know what we should do. Thursday's presentation was really sobering. I know when we started the middle school project in 2017, when we were talking about that in 2018, our numbers were very different. And so I think that we are still dealing with the fallout of some of the changes. And we, I think rightly, should be cautious before we make any huge changes. And I'm really reluctant to force the issue of Mount Pleasant or other schools and say, we're just going to pick on this one school and decide whether we're going to keep it open or close it. Because the default is it's open, right? Unless, until we redistrict. So if we push a vote, the only possible vote is to close it or to ask the city for money. And the city just told us that they're not giving us money for five years, except for for specific projects that they have already identified. So I'm just really cautious about pushing it and pushing it because I don't, I don't see that that serves our community or our taxpayers except to continue to ramp up the angst. And what we really ought to be doing is looking at what makes sense and how do we make things equitable across the city? So that's just my soapbox for this evening.
Can I speak to that?
Daniels and then Mr. Johnson.
So my thing was just to, to start fixing it. You know what I mean? Like, to actually give it the security vestibles that it deserves, to make it ADA accessible, the things that are coming down the pike from the city and the state level that are necessary. Not a vote on whether to keep it open or to keep it closed. But I'm glad also that you mentioned the redistricting because I think that that's the thing. I can't open that vote again. And I think that we really need to take it seriously that if the teachers that are going to be in the building are going to be overworked and not going to stay and not going to be able to handle the class size where we had said that we would keep the class size at a certain number. And if we, if we can't do that, then we, we need to talk about that. I can't open it back up, otherwise I would ask for that.
I don't understand what you're saying.
So when we did the redistricting vote, I voted to not change the line. So that means that I can't open it back up. So I just wanted to be able to talk about that because at the end of the day, if we're going to overload the, this is supposed to be student-centered. And if it's going to be over class size and we promised not to do that and we promised and promised and promised not to do that and then we do it a month before school, I can see why not only is everyone upset, but also saying, is the school board actually for the kids? Because we're supposed to be here for them. We, we have to look out for them and their education. And if they're over district, we, over and over and over again, Dr. Andre said, we're not going to overload the schools. We looked at the projector, you said the numbers are going to change. They're going to move over here. Ms. Gillio said, oh, well, I'm very concerned about these numbers. And you said, oh, no, they're going to move, you know, just be still or whatever. I agree with the teachers. We're a month before school. And if they're going to be over, over class size, what can we do about that? Because that's what we're here to do.
Well, I think that that's something we're going to talk about later on in the agenda that doesn't necessarily have to do with, with Sean's capital improvement projects. But we can definitely readdress that when it comes back up on the agenda at the end of the meeting.
Why not?
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I'll also say about redistricting later, but for now, this report, we have the new athletic trainers and stuff. And a big concern is the conditionistellus.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where I see a lot of, I mean, my son suffered a concussion mostly because of, not from the hit he took, but from landing on the surface of the tellus. So hand to hand with that, I think that has to be, at least the resurfacing of the field, more than anything else, has to be looked at sooner rather than later.
Yeah, Sean, speak to that, please. Mr. Smith, sorry.
Yes, this board actually voted to send that to the Alderman five, six months ago, I believe. It's on the next joint special agenda to push it forward. So that's, that's where we can.
Nights this week?
This Thursday night, correct. Meeting's at McCarthy.
Yeah, the JSSBC this week?
I didn't receive that email yet.
It came out on the ride over, like, 5 o'clock today.
Thank you.
Welcome. Any other questions for Mr. Smith? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for that overview, Ms. Lambfier. I will hand the floor over to Ms. Raymond for Committee on Policy.
Okay, thank you. So tonight, we have one meeting, one policy on second reading. And then I wanted to ask that we waive the second reading for a second policy and vote on that one tonight. So the first policy is IL, Evaluation of Instructional Programs. And I'm going to make the motion based on the agenda, which is to approve IL as it is in your packet. But I'm open to amending or having a conversation about it if it.
Second.
Okay, so this is the one that we had some public comments about. And originally, the policy said that the superintendent shall report annually to the board the progress the district is making towards attainment of its educational goals. In policy, we changed it to from time to time, which I don't think any of us was married to that language because that's really how the curriculum committee has been operating. Prior to COVID, we used to have, at several points during the school year, we would get the iReady data as part of the curriculum committee and then that would come up to the full board. We would get the SAS data once a year and that would come up to the full board. And we thought that changing the language would make it more in line with the practice. Instead of having a, a meeting dedicated to here's all of our scores for the year, it was broken out during the year. I personally don't have skin in the game as far as whether that's the most appropriate way or if we want to do it once a year. And so I would, I guess, be looking for what the board feels and what the superintendent feels. And I'm not opposed to bringing it back to policy because this isn't one that is going to affect the bottom line or stop kids from going to school in a month.
I'm fine with the, the recommendation of, you know, going back. Again, I'm not married to it, but I, I do feel if we go back and present annually, I think it's prudent.
I'm not, Ms. Lambfier, you're in charge.
Oh, yes. Okay, so do you want to, since you made the motion to, to vote on it as is?
I guess, I don't really have a preference.
I, I think maybe.
Do you want to bring it back to policy? Oh, Ms. Daniels Williams had a question.
I think that having it more often throughout the year as it currently was, was that problematic? Like, you know, that was before my time. So like, just, I know that since I've been here, we haven't heard any of it.
Right, I think this past year has not been great about giving us the data, which is part of why we decided to pull the policy. But I'm happy to bring it back. Maybe, maybe what I want to do is resend the motion and send it back to policy to work on the language a little bit more, to make it more reflective of what we'd like the practice to be.
You need a second for that?
I think I just need to withdraw my motion. Unless people object?
Nope.
Okay, so we'll send IL back to policy and hopefully Mr. Poska and Dr. Andre can talk a little bit about how we want this to look. And I, I know Mr. Claffey is not here. He wasn't here for policy either, otherwise I would have asked him.
I'm understanding that it should be like at every meeting, we should have an update. Like, you know, it should be like 85% of the meeting or something like that, that we talk about the numbers and how well the students are doing. I know we're doing a lot of paperwork and stuff too, but I, I, some kind of understanding of that it should be 80 to 90% of what we talk about up here at the board is how well the schools are doing, how well the students are doing in the schools, in the districts, what the teachers would like to be changed, what kind of help that they need.
So come to policy next month?
If I just, and I think over the last couple of years, I think a lot of the data was shared at CIA meeting and not at the full board. So just in full kind of transparency. So I think there was a lot of updates at that level. And then documentations or packets not shared at the full board. So in my mind, I can see an annual state of the schools type meeting where we're going over, especially when, after state testing and we get the results. So, but I think that happened more in curriculum meetings than at a full board meeting. So and then Ms. Bishop and I did talk about really that focus on student achievement and how do we make that much more transparent and more public? So, so I do feel if we bring this back to the policy for some language, but I think the outcome is much more state of the state of really of the schools, at least on an annual basis. And then what are our benchmarks along the way?
Because I definitely, I know in the past, when we had paper packets, so I'm going back pre-COVID, the, the information from curriculum was also included in the full packet, just like the finance and the, you know, we get pretty much the whole finance packet in here and we get the whole policy packet. There was a time when all of the curriculum packet was in here too. So that if you missed the curriculum meeting, you had it right in front of you for this meeting. Doesn't matter at this point. So we'll bring it back to policy. So I would like to move that we waive the rules and allow for JFABD to be voted on this evening instead of having a second reading.
Second.
No, that's not on your list because I just found out about it.
Yeah, I'm giving her a minute to read it down.
That was the right one, right?
JFABD, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
There's an.
All right, so I have Ms. Raymond made the motion and Ms. Darling seconded it.
And so just to speak to this, this is our.
We vote, do you want to vote on it?
Oh, yeah. On the motion to suspend the rules?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
On the motion to suspend the rules, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Ms. Raymond, floor goes back to you.
Okay, so now I'm going to make the motion to approve JFABD as presented in the packet.
That's second.
Thank you, Ms. Darling. All right, thank you. And now to speak to that. So this is our Education of Homeless Children and Unaccompanied Youth policy. And we got some feedback from the state that they wanted us to flesh out the policy by pretty much adding the job responsibilities of the homeless liaison to the policy. So we had this as a separate job description, which is not a policy. And the state asked us to put it right in the policy. And so since this is, as this has happened, our homeless liaison has left the district and it's one of the two positions that we are hiring for. We would like to get this up so that everything is aligned at the same time. And also because the state asked us to. And miss anything, Mr. Poska?
No, I think you said it well, that we recently had some audits. One of the things that came back from the state was asking us to put in this definition. What we've added in the redline copy that you're looking at right now is directly from the NHSBA recommended policy. And so that's what they've asked us to put in there. So coming back to see if we can get this in, go right to the second reading so we can report back to the state that we've made progress on one of the audit findings that we've had from them.
And this doesn't change the practice at all, the practice was fine.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving policy JFABD, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And then just to bring everyone's attention, we had a very busy policy committee this month. There are some changes to JHC, which is Student Early Release, regarding how we have kids get rides home from people who are also faculty or staff because we know that many of our faculty and staff are members of our community. And we want to make sure that the district and, like, the building staff and parents are working together. So we've cleaned up some language there. We have some crowdfunding updates. This one's really significant update to align with KCD and KCDR, which are public gifts and donations, to align with both state law and, I don't know, practice elsewhere across the state. And then the other ones are less interesting. School credit, district credit cards, financial reports and cell phone policies having to do with staff. And then the last one is long-range capital improvements planning. And that policy really talks about the capital improvements committee that Mr. Smith just talked to us about. So those will be for all for next month, but commentary still now.
Just a quick comment, Ms. Raymond. A lot of those policies that we have been looking at, Ms. Raymond had asked me to try to kind of put all those together, work with Mr. Donovan prior to his departure, to have him review these. So we, I get a lot of more practices in place. We wanted to ask if those were accurate practices. So the feedback we got from Mr. Donovan was based upon what is currently occurring in the district. So it was a great opportunity to update these policies under Mr. Donovan's watch prior to his retirement.
I really appreciate Mr. Donovan taking the extra time to, to work on these. And I just wanted to mention on capital improvements, as we were talking about it, Mr. Donovan did add quite a bit of language to that policy before he left to kind of really be clear about the kind of information that the, that the board, but also the Department of Education is looking for when we talk about building projects. And to be really specific about what kinds of things we want.
Okay, thank you very much. This brings. Okay, thank you very much. This brings us up to the Committee on Human Resources. Ms. Gilio, I will give the floor to you.
Thank you. We have four items for consideration tonight. One of which is the recommendation to approve the Assistant Superintendent's job description.
Can we suspend the rules first?
Oh.
No, the next one.
They want me to do that after for some reason.
I apologize.
I don't know. I'm just reading the page.
No, it's fine. Go ahead.
Thank you. Anyway, so we had a special and very short HR meeting one week ago, so on the 15th of July. And we, the HR committee approved the, the recommendation of the new Assistant Superintendent's job descriptions. And we're bringing it forward tonight for full approval.
I'll make the motion.
All right, I'll second it.
Anyone have questions?
I have a question.
Raymond?
Is it posted? Or will it be posted after this gets approved?
It's actually posted right now. It got posted just earlier this evening.
Boy, I hope we approve it.
We were waiting and then I think it got posted. But just in general, the language is just minor. There's a couple of distinctions between who's responsible for federal grants or professional development, really the contact person. The other one, just language on updates, is everything works in conjunction collaboratively. But when we look at our federal grants, Title I, Title II, Title III, who's going to be the project manager? And then just assigning a key person. So for federal grants, especially again, Title I, Title II and Title IV, it's going to be the Assistant Superintendent for elementary schools. And then as far as the professional development master plan, the lead person would be the secondary Assistant Superintendent. And then the mo, and then just a couple of updates around, just language around. Both would be responsible for hearing cases on variances, discipline or other appeals. So that's, those are the major updates. But it's mostly around the lead around professional development plans and federal grants.
Mr. Claffey had some grammar changes as well.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor of approving the Assistant Superintendent's job description, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Now I'd like to make a recommendation to suspend the rules to consider items from the HR meeting held earlier this evening.
Make the motion. Or I'll second it. Did you make the motion?
No, I was looking for a motion.
Oh, I'll second it. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
So so what we, what we looked at earlier tonight is the, when we, we looked at the personnel. We looked at the non-affiliated handbook for 2024-25. And we, as a committee, agreed with the changes in it. And so I'm hoping that we can get a motion tonight and pass that handbook.
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll sec, I'll second it.
Gilio, any comments or questions in regards to the 2024-25 non-affiliated handbook? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the 24-25 non-affiliated handbook, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. And to note, Ms. Raymond stepped out right before the motion was made at 7:36.
Finally, we're looking for a recommendation to approve the personnel recommendations of tonight. Our, our HR people have been very busy and there are a lot of new hires, which was very optimistic. And we, as a committee, felt that it should come to all of you for full approval. So I'm looking for a motion for that.
I'll make the motion.
Johnson, do we have a second?
Second.
Gilio, so on the motion to approve the personnel recommendations of July 22nd, 2024, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We have no unfinished business, but we do have some new business. So I will hand the floor over to Dr. Andre.
Thank you. The first item is really a functionary. It's, the city just needs a motion and a recommendation to approve the transfer and care and control of Elm Street Middle School located at 117 Elm Street, Nashville, New Hampshire, to the City of Nashville pursuant to New Hampshire RSA 199:4, Section 2, effective August 1st of 2024.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Again, this is just more procedural and transfer of the school building over. I think we've had three or four different votes on this. It's just, again, I think it's just paperwork to make sure that it's a clear transference.
No, but it's like our lovely, we don't want to get rid of it. Okay, any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the transfer of Elm Street back to the City of Nashville, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Spiritually, I'm opposed.
Thank you. The next item of business is around the redistricting of the middle school lines. So in your packet, you'll have some information. I'm going to just walk through where we were and then where we're currently at. So just kind of remembering the original redistricting objectives was to assign the most students to the most sensible middle school based on the proximity while creating an equitable proportion of free reduced lunch students at each school, creating equitable class sizes across schools, staying under the cap of 800 per school and minimizing the number of split elementaries for their middle schools. So that was our focus going into the conversation. When we presented numbers on 311, these were our middle school enrollment projections. So grade six at Penachuck was 261 students, Fairgrounds was 228 students, MacArthur was 228. Seventh grade at Penachuck was 221, Fairgrounds was 210, MacArthur was 215. In eighth grade, there was 235 students at Penachuck, 200 students at Fairgrounds and 226 students at MacArthur. So Penachuck had a total population of 717. Fairgrounds had a total population of 638. And MacArthur had a total population of 669 students for a total of 224. So breaking that further down, just again, recapping 311. When we looked at sixth grade at Penachuck in the school year 2025 configuration, so at Penachuck, we have a 261 students on three teams. Four teachers on a team would be a class size of 21.8. Fairgrounds in sixth grade, 228 students, two teams, four teachers on a team, 28.5 students. And at MacArthur, 198 students, two teams, four teachers, 24.8. In seventh grade at Penachuck, there would have been, again, the 221 students, three teams, four teachers per team, 18.4. Fairgrounds, 210 students, two teams, four teachers, 26.3. And at MacArthur, 167 students, two teams, four teachers, 20.8. In eighth grade, at Penachuck, 35 students, three teams, four teachers, 19.6. At Fairgrounds, 200 students, two teams, four teachers, 25 students in a class. At MacArthur, 192 students, two teams, four teachers, 24 in a class. And so again, at that time, we, our concern was the number of students at Fairgrounds. So an update to the class size projections in July. So Penachuck, there really wasn't a change. We still had 245 students. We still had 717 students at Penachuck. When we were doing the rollover. Fairgrounds actually increased 12 students. So they had 223 students. Again, their their class size was still hovering at 27.9. In sixth grade and seventh grade, Fairgrounds remained at 26.8. And in eighth grade, the class size remained at 27.5. So with our discussions, again, I think Fairgrounds being high and we looked at what we could move the boundary line. So we did have the conversation to add more teachers. What does that look like? Or if we are moving the boundary line. So my recommendation is to move a boundary line that impacts the Dr. Chris students. And moving the line from East Hollis Street down to Bower Street. And that would send 62 students, a total of 62 students from Fairgrounds to Penachuck. In sixth grade, it's 18 students. In seventh grade, it's 28 students. In eighth grade, 16 students. That is the change that we're proposing tonight. And if, in those changes, Penachuck could go up to 21.9 students in a class in sixth grade. In seventh grade, it would be 21.5. In eighth grade, it would be 21.5. At Fairgrounds, the total population would be 779 students with a free reduced lunch of 51%. At Fairgrounds, class size would go down to 25.6. And in sixth grade, in seventh grade, it would be at 23.3. And in eighth grade, it would be 25.5 with a total population of 596 students. And at MacArthur, there would be really no changes. Class sizes at MacArthur in sixth grade would actually be 27.8. And seventh grade would be 24.8. And then eighth grade, it would be 26.0 with a total population of 629. So free reduced lunch at Penachuck again was a 51%. Fairgrounds would come up to, go down to 46%. And at MacArthur, it would be 49%. So it's still within the realms of free reduced lunch. Relatively the same. Penachuck would, would still have the lowest class size, even moving with the 62 students. And then we also, again, one of the things we looked at is considering moving all of the Dr., eliminate another split. If we moved all of the Dr. Chris students to Penachuck, that would bring Penachuck up to 845 students, which right now, I think that was a nonstarter. That would bring the free reduced lunch to 53%. Fairgrounds would go down to 529 students. And they would be at 42% and then no changes at MacArthur. Staying at 629 students. And that would bring them, they would stay the same at 49%. So again, the proposal tonight is moving the line down a couple of blocks from East Hollis Street down to Bower Street. And again, this is impacting, this is a school that's already split. Every student is already going to a different school. So none of this, the students are either at Elm Street right now, or moving to Fairgrounds, or they're moving to, to MacArthur, or they're going to Penachuck. So every student who is a former Chris kid will be going to a different school. So we're trying to keep as many students together as possible. And this shift from East Hollis down to Bower is 62 students. And then in sixth grade, it's 18 students. In seventh grade, it's 28 students. In eighth grade, it's 16 students. We would call on these families and say, you know, they received a letter saying they're going to Fairgrounds. We would call them and send another letter notifying them of the change from Fairgrounds to Penachuck.
Seeing no questions? We'll just go around Ms. Lampier and then Raymond, Gilio.
I just want to remember back to when we discussed changing the boundary up around Broad Street. And we had a lot of parents show up. And we decided to change the boundary based on what those parents said. And now we're discussing changing the boundary at Dr. Chris. And we don't have any parents because this is a neighborhood where parents are busy trying to survive, trying to work, struggling with childcare issues, transportation issues. And I, for one, am not going to vote in favor of changing the boundary for this area of the city because their parents are not here to represent them. So we are here to represent them. And I'm sorry, I know that this is going to cause problems because the, the the grade, the school sizes at Fairgrounds are certainly, certainly unacceptable. But I don't think that children in one of the most disadvantaged areas of our city should bear the cost. It just, it, we're here for all the kids, not just the kids on one side of town.
If I may address that. So the one aspect is by moving the 62 students, they would actually have lower class sizes and more, and that's one impact. If there's no change to the boundaries, Fairgrounds will remain at 26, 27 students in a class.
You are a very creative superintendent, Dr. Andre. I feel like you will be able to figure something else out.
Ms. Raymond?
Yeah, I, I guess I, hmm, I was under the mistaken impression that these parents maybe had gotten some prior notice that we would be discussing this given their circumstance. And I I'm really struggling with this. I thought it made sense to move. I'm just really struggling with it. I have the same thoughts as Ms. Lampier. I I would much rather see us moving kids at this point into MacArthur and adding staff or moving staff around than continuing to add to Penachuck. And I didn't think I was going to feel this way until I saw that it was 62 kids. I thought it was only, you know, like a dozen or.
Gilio?
I'm totally opposed to this. Listening to the people tonight talking about what's happening at Penachuck, I don't believe that we should be sending 62 more students. Just don't think that's right. And secondly, I know we're talking about the redistricting that happened and how we changed lines for Broad Street. I was not, I voted against that. I did not think that that, that that should have been done. I thought it went against the interests of the district in having three sort of equitable middle schools with similar populations and numbers. And so there's no way I can support this.
Ms. Darling?
Hi, so I'm a Dr. Chris mom who lives in low income housing. I ran under the premise of making sure that people in my community had a voice. The nicest way I could say this is, one, people in my community don't ever get notice of stuff like this. If it weren't for an individual who gave me the chance to speak up at the State House, I never would have ended up here. The average person in my buildings has a literacy rating just lower than the city's. We, they couldn't understand half the documents we pass anyways, even if it was done in their language. Would they be here tonight? I don't know. There's no way for me to know without going door to door, which I try to only do once every couple of years. I know though that in my neighborhood, the problems that we face are a little bigger than what middle school is my child going to. As it is, the only thing I've heard so far have been As it is, the only thing I've heard so far have been mild annoyances at the fact that the new school is, like, the one not being utilized by the kids losing Elm Street. But we've all heard that. Um, when you're facing food insecurity, boundary lines and redistricting does not matter. When you're facing your child having to see fights on a regular basis, you're not coming in talking about it being traumatizing to be separated from a friend for a little while. But I do know that, uh, Ms. Fulton, who used to be the principal at Dr. Chris, um, I talked to her quite a few times in her last year at Dr. Chris. And I know that she, she had mentioned liking the way that Dr. Chris currently splits because of the way it works in the neighborhoods. I would love to hear from her if that's changed or if that's still the same. She was a great principal for so long that she knows the area almost better than the people that live there. And she knows the families just as well, too.
Ms. Williams?
Um, so I guess I want, I echo everything that has already been said on the board. I am totally against moving this line again. And it's disheartening that I keep hearing, "It's only forty-eight, it's only sixty-two kids." That's important language. Um, but I also wanna point out with facts that the state recommends twenty kids per class for middle school size. I, I wanna make sure that we know that we have budgeted for extra teachers that we haven't hired, that we could hire, and spread these kids out. We owe them a great education. That's why I'm here. I don't think stuffing them in a classroom, hearing from the teachers at Penechuk, I, I can't, I, no.
Do you have anything to add, Mr. Johnson?
Just that, um, we've, again, I, I voted for the Broad Street. Um, I wouldn't vote for then doubling that number. Um, Penechuk has already been placed with a lot of kids. They're getting assistance, they're getting more teams and stuff. But again, it's the space. The space is just, we've heard it. It, I've seen middle schools when it's not packed and the space is always an issue. Now, we're talking about really upping the numbers. And the other thing is, um, as Mr. Hoffman stated, we discussed possible third teams at Fairgrounds if the numbers went up at Fairgrounds. And now, instead, we're discussing changing borders. Um, I really do think we need to look at third teams at Fairgrounds more than, more than this.
Can you speak, would we be able to add more teams or maybe bring all of Dr. Chris to McCarthy?
So, in the redistricting of moving all of Dr. Chris to McCarthy, uh, again, one of the original notions was to keep the free and reduced lunch, um, equitable, uh, or across all three schools. Um, if you move all of Dr. Chris to McCarthy, then, um, that was one of the original proposals.
Right, it was like a sixty-thirty.
It was a bigger, um, it, it was more than the five, six points, uh, uh, between the schools that we were looking for. So, I think the hard part is if you move all of Dr. Chris, whether it's at Penechuk or Fairgrounds or McCarthy, um, the free, free and reduced lunch percentage will, um, um, you know, um, change. The, you know, as far as adding Fairgrounds, the, the numbers that we would be looking at is seventh and eighth grade. So, in our conversations, um, the, um, now, you need a four-person team for certification in sixth grade. You can have a two-person team, um, seventh and eighth grade with certifications. It's a little more difficult, uh, to find people who do dual-certify. So, we can have those conversations and, you know, we come back and say we can add eight new teachers, um, in our budget. And then, that's gonna be a conversation on where does that money come from? And so, that would be, uh, you know, balancing the budget on whether it's, you know, we had a, um, uh, H, uh, HR meeting earlier. So, are we looking at not filling unfilled positions in other places? Or if we put in eight new teachers into the budget, you know, that's gonna rub up against something else. So, and then bring down the class sizes at, um, Fairgrounds. You know, it'd be around nineteen to twenty, um, students. Uh, again, I, I don't know where the state came up with the recommendation of twenty in a class size. Um, you know, that's, and that's not even, research around class size is really about K-three. Um, small class sizes.
National Education, then National Center for Education Statistics.gov.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, all the research around small class sizes is really for early elementary, K-three. And then the, the impact size after that. Um, the number one indicator is, um, around collective efficacy. Um, that's our biggest, and we had a presentation on that. Um, so, if we maintain or we add teachers at Fairgrounds, you know, if that's eight teachers and that class size would go down to about seventeen, eighteen, nineteen students in a class. If that's a priority, then we, we would have to look at other areas of the budget that we might have to cut.
I have a question. I have two.
Ms. Daniels, Williams?
And again, I just, I just, again, at Penechuk, even with, you know, moving sixty-two students, they would still have a smaller class size than Fairgrounds. So, not stuffing kids into classrooms or, uh, overpopulating classes. So, they would still have twenty-one, twenty-two students in a classroom, which is lower than Fairgrounds, moving the sixty-two students. Uh, they would have a class size of twenty-three and twenty-five. So, I just wanna be clear when we say we're overpopulating or stuffing kids into a classroom. Penechuk, even with the line moving, still have the smallest class size.
So, I guess, my first question is, um, what happens if the F and R percentage number for the students moves around, like you were saying, sixty-thirty? What happens to the school? What happens to the kids? What does that number mean?
So, free, uh,
The free and, and reduced lunch population that you keep referencing, what does that mean for the students? And what does it mean for the schools if it goes to sixty-thirty or changes at all up and down? What does it mean?
So, the, the, one of the principles we were looking at is to keep that number stable. What does it mean as amount of supports? It, it depends, it could be, uh, do we need more reading services? Do we need more students, uh, more special education services? At the middle school and high school, um, we, they're not Title I schools. So, they're not getting Title I funding. So, there's not additional staff that comes at the middle school and high schools from Title I funding. So, it's just the demographics will look different if you have, um, sixty percent free reduced lunch or thirty percent free reduced lunch. So, it comes down to the makeup of, of, and the needs of the classroom.
So, that, is that code for, I'm spreading kids out that get free and reduced lunch because they're gonna need more services?
That's, no, it's,
I, I'm sorry.
I don't know what you mean by code. I mean, it's, like, all our students are gonna need.
You, you said because this is not a Title I school, because they're gonna, they might need more services. I, I, I just need more information, please, guys.
Yeah, so, uh, elementary schools, we have Title I schools and non-Titel I schools. And so, with the Title I descent, like, funding, um, some schools get a reading specialist, so they might get extra supports based on Title I funding. There's no Title I funding at our middle school or high schools.
But based on the free and reduced lunch number?
Sometimes, yes, yes.
Sometimes?
Yeah. If they qualify, yes.
Yeah. Uh, thank you. I, I'm sure if I had the question, someone else did, because we keep saying F and R, and then it was, yes, thank you.
That was one, again, that was one of the principles going in, is to look at balancing, um, enrollment and then, um, making sure we were minimizing splits and then, um, balancing free and reduced lunch. So, that, that's what we looked at. Uh, it was referenced, you know, when we started having these conversations in twenty-seventeen, each school was constructed for, to house eight hundred students. Our population is no longer eight hundred students. And so, the original drawings of McCarthy, the, and then even the, um, you know, the, the additions to Fairgrounds, um, you know, Fairgrounds was also supposed to hold eight hundred students. I think if you walked through that school, it's a little more confined than Penechuk. Um, you know, there, there was no modifications to the classes at, at Fairgrounds. Um, so I think Fairgrounds is still tight. Like, I couldn't even imagine eight hundred, or seven hundred students at Fairgrounds. Um, and, you know, Penechuk is, uh, there's a little more room there. But again, the premise going in, um, was to start to eliminate splits. So, uh, the difference between, with the updated proposals, the difference between Fairgrounds and Penechuk is approximately a hundred and eighty-three students, uh, which is down from the current, you know, difference between Elm Street and the other, uh, middle schools.
My second question was, how many teachers did we budget for in this budget season that was just passed by the alderman? How many teachers?
At the middle school level?
Um, we,
In general.
Did we separate them by middle school, elementary and all that? How many teachers did we budget? Because that's the biggest line item. How many teachers did we budget for?
I would have to, um, I don't have that numbers in front of me. I can get, bring it back to you.
Okay, thank you. I was just looking to see if we had the money already set aside from the city for these eight teachers.
We do not have empty slots as a placeholder for extra teachers. So, every, every position was funded that we currently have. There is no, or in our proposal, we asked for new teachers, like new ELL teachers or new special education teachers. Those were budgeted and there's not, in the current proposals, eight unfilled middle school positions.
The burden goes to the students, 'cause we didn't prepare for the amount of teachers that we needed? And, and I'm sorry, I'm, I'm having a really hard time with this. I, I just feel like we said that we had all these extra positions, that we're putting them in, we're putting fifteen extra positions in, hoping to fill them, hoping to fill these teacher slots. And then we said, "No, they're not just teacher slots, these are for ELL students." Then we're, uh, each ELL teachers only that we're hiring. And, but we budgeted all that. And I just don't wanna fail these kids.
I, I don't necessarily, I, I guess, when we, I don't understand your question, I guess. Where, with ELL, you know, we, that was a need that we budgeted for. Um, it wasn't a hope. So, I, I guess what I'm asking, you asking for unfilled positions to be transferred over to middle school positions. And then, the other one, I think I, I'm just a little, um, com- No, it's, so, I, I guess the burden going on students, right? So, at Fairgrounds, again, I just wanna be clear, because we can have the same conversation, whether it was the new initiatives at the middle schools, without moving the, the lines. If we didn't move the lines, teachers might be having the same conversations of overwhelmed with differentiation, new team structures, new curriculum, even if we weren't having this conversation tonight. And so, where I wanna continue is this proposal is alleviating the class sizes at Fairgrounds and being revenue neutral, right? We're moving sixty-two students from Fairgrounds, which would take their class sizes from twenty-seven to, to twenty-eight, to a smaller class sizes to twenty-four. At Penechuk, the class size would go from nineteen and twenty, or twenty, twenty, to twenty-two. So, I don't see the burden falling on the students.
So, my concern was, in, um, March, when we looked at the numbers, when we originally, um, February or March, when we originally looked at these numbers, before we asked for the money from the city, before we did any of that, you said, "Don't worry, we're gonna move this, that thirty-one, that we were concerned with, that twenty-two, we're gonna switch it all together." And we trusted that, I trusted that you would have it all worked out, that it wouldn't look like this. And then now, it's like, we're, we're stuck.
So, maybe I'm confused. I don't think we're stuck. So, I'm trying to be fiscally prudent here. This is not a cost to the taxpayers, right? This is in our budget, there's not adding new positions. And we're, well, like, so, class sizes are thirty-one contractually. I, I, right? So, class sizes are thirty-one at the middle school level. And so, adding new teachers, again, that's a conversation. If we wanna add, if, if all the, the Fairgrounds and Penechuk, if they were maxed out, I would say possibly we have to add eight new teachers. But there is room. And again, I think where we're looking at is we're moving the lines down a little bit. And it's impacting, you know, sixty, again, every student's important. But again, these students haven't been at Penechuk, or they haven't been at Fairgrounds, or they haven't been at McCarthy. So, by adjusting the lines, again, this is not impacting any of our financial goals that we presented prior. It is working with families to see where they wanna, you know, moving them over. And class sizes at Penechuk are still gonna be below Fairgrounds. Are the hallways a little tighter? Possibly. But again, this school was built for eight hundred students. And so, so I just wanna be clear, like, if we wanna go back and the direction is keep the lines where they are and then still move Fairgrounds, I'm gonna come back to the finance and operations, like, and say, "We need to adjust our budget to hire for eight new teachers at Fairgrounds." And if our priority is to keep class sizes at, you know, nineteen, twenty at the, at the middle school, I'm gonna push back and say, "What about elementary? Where the research is." So, we might have higher class sizes at elementary than at a middle school in our high schools.
And, and I guess we, I, I, I think that's so important of why we were talking about it early in the year, that it was good to strategically plan, that it was good to listen to all these things early before we went to do the budget. And then we could have asked for more at the budget. We could have distributed differently before Mr. Donovan left. Those, that's what we could have done in March if we knew that this was gonna be the thing. Now that, now that we're here, as our superintendent, what do we do? Because that's, that's what it is. We don't want to squish them into the classroom, at, at least I don't. I can't speak for the other eight.
I still don't think we're squishing them into the classroom. So, because again,
They're not gonna walk down the hallway. If they're not gonna be able to, like, like I said, thirty-one people in a class?
There's not thirty-one students in a class, there's twenty students in a class. The contract says we can have up to thirty-one.
Right.
And I, I said at the, at the meeting, "I am not comfortable with numbers of twenty-seven, twenty-eight." That's why I'm coming with this recommendation. If I, if I was comfortable with this, right, it's under contractual, I didn't have to adjust the lines. So, I'm coming forward to say, "We have a changing demographic." I, I am not comfortable with twenty-seven, twenty-eight students in a class at Fairgrounds. This is a, a, a manner in which we can shift the student populations without costing any more money and still working with the families. And again, Penechuk is gonna have the lower class size. And the other aspect of it, too, and again, maybe this is more, you know, um, parochial, like, is that redistricting and looking at our, uh, numbers, I think this is gonna happen at, at the elementary lines, and we're gonna have, like, boundaries depending on where we're at, that you see in other districts. If you're in one zone, you may go to one of two schools based on overall enrollment as opposed to adding new teams, right? Because again, at Penechuk and Fairgrounds, the class sizes, we're not bursting at the seams of every class has thirty-one kids in, in, in a classroom. We're talking about at Penechuk, twenty-two students in a classroom. At Fairgrounds, we're talking about twenty-five students in a classroom. And at McCarthy's, you know, it's, there's twenty-seven, twenty-four, and that includes some of the intensive needs students. So, I wanna be careful. We're not shoving kids into classrooms. The class sizes are still manageable.
Lampier?
Um, so, when we had our meeting in March, um, there was, we had a presentation that had, um, it had, Penechuk was all set, it had McCarthy was all set, but there were two different plans for Fairgrounds. And I remember at the time, I said to you, you know, Dr. Andre, this doesn't really look- this doesn't really look good, that it's the school that's in the inner city that we, is the one that we're kind of saying, well, maybe we'll do this, and maybe we'll do that, and not have like a stable plan for these kids. And, you know, I'm just, I'm just really disappointed. I'm disappointed in you, that you did not address this with us earlier. Because the actual numbers really haven't changed that much. And, and we knew it was going to, we, we knew that that might be an issue in March. And I don't think it's fair that you brought this to us in August. And you said, and that pretty much leaves us in the position, and what you're telling us is that we either vote to do this, or we're going to have 27 or 28 kids in the class. And I, I am not okay with that. I'm not. I don't think it's fair that you put us in this position, and I'm not going to vote for this. And the thing that I'm thinking about as I'm sitting here is that you did the figures to see what it would look like for all these kids to go to Penachuk. What would it look like for all of them to go to McCarthy? What are the alternatives? I mean, is there another plan?
I also want to highlight, I think we, we didn't have all of the correct numbers for how many kids were coming into the school district until one, one-
So we just had, so we just had our end of year numbers that came out. And we're still working with cleaning up the data. The hard part is always with Fairgrounds of how many students are actually disenrolling and going to charter schools. And that's usually a higher number. We actually retained more students this year, which is a good thing.
And that was the point of the middle school project, right? Is to make our middle schools more attractive.
So we don't have the numbers, we, and again, it's, today's July 20th. We only received the numbers July 1, at end of year, of where-
The thing is, is that in the inner city, that's where people who are immigrants, that's where people who are low income go. Those are the people that are more likely to have small kids. Because they can't afford, because people that have small kids are, in general, in a lower income bracket. And this is where we need extra services, actually, we need to be extra careful of this area. And that's what I've been saying for over a year now.
So that's correct. But all of Bicentennial goes to Fairgrounds Middle School. And that's where the fluctuation is, of how many students are going there. So we might lose 50 students from Bicentennial to Fairgrounds. And that's, that's a big, big change. So that's, that's what the number is. And we don't always get that from the families. So this is why it's late in the, in the stage of when we're coming on, on that switch.
I just remember back that there were two different plans for Fairgrounds.
Yep.
Is the other plan still a possibility?
So we, again, I think we can look at hiring more middle school teachers. And again, in a year from now, we're going to have the conversation when we're looking at our budget of 19 students in a class, and so that we still can run that. But it's going to put constraints on other areas in the budget. That's, and that's always an issue. So again, we, we can run that plan. So sixth grade was, we will look at a two-person team to alleviate some of that. And then we will look at, seventh and eighth grade would have to, based on certification, be a four-person team. That would be-
Are these the teachers that we laid off?
It could, um, most, I don't know how many teachers are left.
Because we, we've talked about this. And we were discussing the teams and changing the line in Broad Street. And because we changed the line at Broad Street, we were going to be, we're going to have one less team at Fairgrounds. And then we laid off teachers. And so this is a good lesson for this board, that we should always consider what we're doing and where our priorities are.
That part, we didn't have any control over on who was fired and all that. We didn't have, we didn't have control over whether it was going to go to how many teams or whatever. It was just, boom, this is what you're going to do.
Ms. Raymond?
So I think, I have two thoughts. The first is, this has been, I think the board has expressed dissatisfaction with the redistricting process since, since the beginning in that some of the underlying goals and assumptions were never brought to the board. Like, for example, we're going to focus on free and reduced lunch instead of class sizes or something else. That was something that the Redistricting Committee decided in non-public meetings and then brought a plan to us, kind of fully formed, without, without input. And I think we all complained bitterly last year about not liking, not liking the process and not liking the, the options. And I, I think, like, the question of Bicentennial, for example, like, it seems ridiculous to me that we're sending, it has seemed ridiculous to me for the last year, that we're sending all of Bicentennial to Fairgrounds instead of McCarthy. Having said that, I don't think that our budget can allow for hiring eight more teachers. And I don't think it's fair to the, the, I, I don't think it's fair for two things, for the taxpayers to continue to have more teachers with the significant declining enrollment we've seen over the last five years. And for that not to translate into smaller class sizes. So like, I'm looking at Fairgrounds right now, which is our, you know, inner city school. And they currently have, if we, if we don't do this plan, they currently have 28 kids per class. Because we focused on balancing free and reduced lunch numbers. Like, I would much rather see them, see everybody have lower class sizes. I don't, I, I still don't think putting more kids in Penachuk is the answer. But I don't think that there's time in July, at the end of July, to reallocate all of our resources. And I think that we were all worried about this months ago, thinking that the lines weren't making sense, but we would try it. I really think that the lines still don't make sense. They don't make sense for elementary either. And the problem was, is that we, is that we outsourced what the goals were instead of saying to the community, what are our goals for our classrooms? And I, I, I'm just, I'm disappointed by the whole thing. Having said that, I almost feel that it is going to be more damaging to the kids in this, in this blue square to be in classes of 28 kids than it would be to be in classes of 21 and a half kids. Like, that's to me what it comes down to. I don't think we have the votes to put it through. I'm not, I don't like it. I don't think it's sustainable long term. But, um, I don't know. The whole thing is upsetting. It's been upsetting for a year and a half now. I'm getting more upset over time instead of less upset, which is not helping anyone.
Dr. Johnson?
Uh, just real quick, going back to the March presentation, we did have the note, "The Fairgrounds' recommendation will be monitored. If enrollment maintains or increases, the recommendation will be three teams of four teachers." That is what we told people in March. Again, then, I, you know, we're, we're here right now where we are. At that time, we said that the situation would be monitored. And at that time, we said, if necessary, we would look at increases. We didn't say anything about coming in and changing the, the, you know, the lines. We said to the people at that time, if, if it increases, we'll put forward the recommendation of three teams of four teachers. Again, that's just going back to the presentation that we gave to the city at that time. So it's difficult now to turn around and say, oh, the numbers went up, but we're going to move a line instead. We're gonna, you know, we know we told you one thing, but now we're doing a different thing. And that's, that's what I have difficulty with.
Can we even find eight more teachers? Because Mr. Paus's presentation at HR this evening was that we have seven middle school openings, as it is. So that would bring us up to 15 middle school openings with less than six weeks to go. Like, I just, I feel like we're stuck. I feel like we have to do it, and it's bad all around.
But I wanted to say that they were the middle school teachers that were let go. 13 of them.
But then we hired 15 ELL teachers.
I, I, I understand that.
Which the Department of Justice said we have to do.
No, no, no. I'm not saying that we didn't need the ELL teachers.
If I don't mind, those teachers that we ended up riffing were the English department. We are not looking for eight English teachers here. We are looking for every grade subject. And to go by off of that, our riff list, we've almost exhausted three quarters of that riff list already. So there are not any teacher, not many teachers to bring back.
What do you mean exhausted? It means you, we've rehired them?
We either rehired them, or we've offered them a position and they've found other districts.
Ms. Lam Fear?
Dr. Andre, you said that Bicentennial is the school that's grown the most. Why aren't we changing the lines at Bicentennial?
I didn't say they've grown the most. That's our, um-
Well, you said that the, the changes at Fairgrounds are mostly coming from Bicentennial.
So it's the retention of students who are going to charter school and public, uh, private school. So usually we average about 30 or 40 students that are leaving. We did not lose 30 or 40 students this year.
So are we, are we, are we moving the district lines at Dr. Crisp instead of Bicentennial because we know that the, the kids from Dr. Crisp aren't going to go to charter schools?
No.
I mean, why, why was it this, why was it this neighborhood that was changed instead of a different neighborhood?
Well, we can't put them in McCarthy because we don't have the staff there either.
And, and I'm just asking why it was this neighborhood that was chosen.
So that's a school that's currently split. And so we were moving down two blocks.
What are the other schools that are split?
Just Fairgrounds. So a, again, it would have been Broad Street. Those would have been the three schools. Now we're down to two.
Yeah, but once again, the schools that are split are Fairgrounds and Dr. Crisp. And those are the two schools that are in the inner city. Dr. Andre, we need to fight for those kids as much as we fight for the other kids.
So, and that's the recommendation of moving where those students would, those, these 62 students, to Mr. Raymond's point, would go into a smaller class size. So they would actually, um, be, be addressed.
How?
Oh, they're going from a class size of 27 down to a class size of 21.
So they'll be back down to 21?
If they, if those 62 students go to Penachuk, they will be in a smaller class.
So my, my thing is, I'm glad that Rob brought it up. Why can't we keep our word?
So we can. I just, I mean, we can post those positions tomorrow, and then we will look in the budget. And again, it would be, it would be a rub. I mean, we already put in, just, full transparency is, that's going to be a conversation if we look at the eight positions back into the budget. You know, we, we can go in that direction.
But this is-
I just want to, again, I just wanted, this was a, a, a solution that, uh, what I thought was minimum impact and fiscally sound. So we can, we can add the, you know, post tomorrow for, for new teams at the, um, at Fairgrounds. It's, you know, class size is going to be, you know, 19 or so. And I think that's a conversation where, you know, I think Ms. Bishop just said, if that's going to be our priority to have smaller class sizes, I, I, that's going to, with a limited budget, that's going to rub against other things.
But we also have the special revenue fund to back that up.
No, that's, you can't use the special revenue fund.
Not for teachers?
So my, what I'd like to add my two cents in is, is we are, our role here is to make sure that the students get the best education that they have, and that there's equity, and that, you know, they're getting similar educations among each school. I don't understand how they're going to be getting similar educations when there are 28 kids in a classroom versus 19 kids in a classroom. I think equity starts with class size. I think being fiscally responsible with the monies that we are given is also something that we have to hold in very high regard. I think it's paramount to us being able to maintain the equity and the opportunities that we provide for our students. If the concern, if we're able to keep classroom sizes equitable across the district, but if the hallways are a little bit more packed, maybe it's more fiscally responsible to look at hallway monitors during the day. If that's the concern. If the concern is the hallway and kids walking down the hallway with big backpacks, maybe there's less of a financial responsibility. Instead of hiring more teachers, hiring support staff to make those transitions easier. That seems to be a more fiscally responsible opportunity while also creating that equity amongst students. I want to address Ms. Lam Fear's point about how these changes always seem to happen amongst the more dense areas of town. This is, this is, this is something that weighs heavy on my heart all of the time. And that's, that's my 20-plus years of doing social work in Nashua, is the inner cities are where people, I mean, we were just talking about zoning. You know, this starts with zoning. We can't build out the outskirts of Nashville because it's, we just, the, the rules aren't there. So if we're going to keep sardining people, I mean, look at the, the major drive apartments. Let's, let's push down all of these townhouses to put 500 more apartments in because that's what it's zoned to do. So let's congest it even more than it already is. Like, it's not us creating this inequality amongst the students who live in the dense areas. That's what city living, that's what happens within city living. That's what happens when we don't have the opportunities to build up along the outskirts. So the best thing that we can do for these students, because we don't, as a Board of Education, we don't have a, a huge say in how the downtown is built up and how, you know, how these families get to move in here. But we have the awesome responsibility of giving them the option of having a fantastic education. And the first thing that we can do for that is having low class sizes and having them spread amongst the diff, the district in a demographically equitable way. Instead of having one school that all the free and reduced kids go to, one school where all of the kids with the huge backyards go to. Like, creating that equity amongst the district is, across the board, it's class sizes, it's opportunities, it's, you know, experiential opportunities. And I think the first way that we can get this done is by allowing the kids to be in small classrooms and not have it be, this school gets small classrooms and this one doesn't. But also taking into mind what is financially responsible for the whole district. Hiring eight teachers is a lot different than hiring two hallway monitors. So I think maybe the creativity that you're asking Dr. Andre to do could be found within that. Because what we're hearing from the teachers is that there's not enough room for the students to walk in the hallways, and there isn't a large enough gathering space for them to have celebratory moments. Not in regards to classroom size. So I think if we're going to be making any decisions, and we are saying that we're student-first, it needs to be amongst classroom size. And we need to recognize where our limitations are in regards to the densely populated areas of town. I know, I keep looking at Ms. Darling, because I used to live in that area too. And there's really no way of creating different neighborhood pockets, which is what we were trying to do with the redistricting. Because I, and I, I lived on, I lived on Crown Street and Arlington Street and Gillis Street, and I've been downtown, man. And I loved it because we could walk amongst all of our friends. But like, there's no real delineation of what is a neighborhood except for apartment complexes. So when we're looking at moving kids around, sure, it's East Hollis to Bowers, but that's four different apartment complexes. And in our heads, that's four different neighborhoods. Whereas Broad Street, that's one neighborhood behind Lincoln Park. Birch Hill is two neighborhoods off of Broad Street and then one off of Dublin. Like, it's two very different ways of living. And I think one of the things that we miss as this board is we forget that apartment complexes are neighborhoods within themselves. And we, when we're looking at changing up who goes where, it's a lot different than how we're looking at the outskirts schools. So I am in favor of this because I want every student to have the same access to teachers and not have the teachers feel overburdened. And I think we can come up with a better way of managing the hallway situations without it being a ginormous exchange in what we've already put forward to the Board of Aldermen in regards to our budget. So that's my two cents. Ms. Lam Fear?
Dr. Andre, if we do not vote for this, can you come up with another plan? Or will those class sizes stay the same at Fairgrounds?
Without moving any lines?
I'm not asking about moving any lines.
Just asking for clarification.
No, no, I, I just want to know if you can come up with another plan to present to the board to address the class sizes at Fairgrounds if we vote no to this.
So, I mean, yes, I can come up with a recommendation and then what that impact would be, the financial impact would be.
But how long would that take and how long do we have?
Five weeks.
Yeah, I mean, so without moving or blurring lines, to lower the class size would be additional staff. I mean, it's, it's, I mean, that's as frank as I can be.
Whenever we have to make tough decisions, it's always the kids in the middle, in the inner city that pay the price. Always.
Ms. Gilio?
I would, I would like to, I haven't had much to say tonight. And I would like to say that right now I'm going to offer this wonderful solution to the problem. And everyone's just going to be really happy about it. However, I've been trying to, no, we can't adjourn. I've been trying to do that. And, and so what I'm feeling more is just totally sad because I think that we totally missed the mark when we did the middle school redistricting. I know that, that we didn't have, we weren't looking for this fall at schools with eight hundred kids. And I know our population had diminished. But I think to have a brand-new, state-of-the-art school with, with only half, half the population they need with only two teams instead of three. We had this vision of, of what our three middle schools were going to look like all these years that McCarthy's been being built. And somehow we failed. And, and that's why we're here, five weeks before school opens. I don't understand why we didn't do a better job and why McCarthy is, is at so low in its population. And I have no solutions whatsoever. I'm sorry.
I thought you said you were going to have the wonderful solution that we were all going to be happy about.
I wanted to. I just, I wanted to. I'm sorry.
Ms. Darling?
Ms. Bishop, it doesn't happen as often as I'd like, but I'm in full agreement with you. I actually really like the idea of hall monitors in the middle school, especially because having a middle schooler at home myself, I'm, they're volatile, man. I don't know how our teachers do it. They're, they're all amazing. But to put facts over feelings, twenty-one versus twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And if I had to choose as a parent which classroom to put my kid in, I would always choose the twenty-one. I think it's frustrating and I share the same annoyance, I guess, as everyone's kind of been stating of, we're five weeks away and this is just coming up. But I like that this is the only big thing's coming up, guys. Come on, we don't have masks or Nazis or anything like that right now. Things are good. But yeah, no, I'm actually in support with Ms. Bishop. I would love to see hall monitors in middle schools to help just with the issues in halls and in bathrooms. And I think that should just be standard across the board, not just... Now that I just made it so every teacher in the room doesn't like me, I'm sorry, guys. You'll like me again next time, I promise. That's all I got.
Thank you. Okay, so just one, one more round of comments and then I think we need to start wrapping up this conversation. Ms. Daniels-Williams?
I was just going to say, I think that we should have hall monitors as well. I don't, I think that we should fill McCarthy as we had directed. That's what we said. That's what we would do if any other school was overloaded. That is our standard. And I think that that's what we should do, is fill McCarthy's other wing.
Any other comments, questions?
Is this a decision that we are planning on voting on tonight? Or is this going to become a, I'll need to go separate ways and think and then come back?
No, I think, I think we need to have a vote tonight. I, if I, if I were a parent in this situation, I would like the most amount of time possible, especially if we need to come up with, you know, before and after school. If, if some kids are now having a bus and, or not having a bus, parents need the most amount of time to come up with how to safely get their kids to and from school and whatever kind of babysitting they need.
I just want to say that the reason that we can discuss making this kind of move five weeks before school starts is because it's Dr. Crisp. We couldn't do this if it was Broad Street. We couldn't do it if it was Bicentennial. We couldn't do it anywhere else because those parents would be here. And so it is up to us to put the kids in the inner city first. Those are the ones that we need to represent the most. And, you know, I, I just, I'm just tired of them always being last. But I am going to vote in favor of this because at this time it's the best thing that we can do. But I really want us to be aware that we didn't, we didn't start this thing. Like, like you said, Ms. Bishop, you know, we didn't, we didn't start this inequality, this... But it's our decisions that continue it. And so we need to give some real serious thought as to decisions we can make in the future so that we can be truly, truly a school district with equity.
Is there no other option to change this? Is this how it has to be? Even because we have five weeks, there's no more going back to the table and changing it? It's just this or nothing? This or over stacking, not keeping our word? It, I just want to make, be sure that it's one or the other?
So one of the, one of the things that, that I want to just kind of, and I know I'm interrupting you, you were about to say something. But when, when we're saying that we're going back on our word, I, I'm a little bit hesitant to agree with you on that only because I think when we started off the year, we started off in a very different place before we had our, you know, our budget that was done, the ELL requirements. There were a lot of things that kind of came to us pretty quickly that we needed to pivot for. And I don't think that we were disingenuous with the amount of teachers that we needed. I think we recognized that we were working with constraints that were a bit more challenging than what we had before. We were like definitely millions and millions of dollars less because we had no ESAR money. And I think we had to reprioritize for the, for the L, for the DOJ stuff. So I, I think one of the things that we always have to remember is the reason that we asked to be on this board was because we are always faced with the tough decisions. And we're always going to be disappointing somebody. And we're up here saying, I'm willing to be a part of that discussion and, and to be present for it. And sometimes the decisions that we have to make, we're, we're picking between two, two old eggs, you know? Like, we're not going to have an awesome opportunity because we aren't built in that way at this point to be able to create that kind of equality. But I think one of the things that we're hearing tonight, which is something that we... I feel like there are four things that I've been really trying to do and we haven't been able to do them because we just haven't had time. But remember when we first came together as a board? One of the things I wanted to do was create that goals, like what are our goals for our board? I think we are very clearly stating that our, one of our, one of our board tenants is creating equity and making sure that every student is offered the same opportunity. I think we have clearly stated that as a board tonight. And I think it's something that we can continue using as one of our guiding principles. And I think when we're coming up with these plans, I think this is how we do, this is how we start the conversation on how to create equity. And it's certainly within the classroom first. But, sorry, Ms. Raymond?
Thanks. I just want to say, I think that we're not just disappointing people in the, in the community because I think we are, but I'm also disappointed in us and myself. And I, I, I don't think that I have been quiet about it because I'm not a quiet person. But I really think that what we've ended up with is a redistricting plan for the middle schools that is really not appropriate. It didn't meet, I, it didn't meet what the board's goals were as far as equity. And I think as we're having these conversations, we're learning that free and reduced lunch is not the balanced goal that we want. It's more about class sizings and using the buildings appropriately. And I, I will vote for this tonight, even though I hate it. However, because of the class size issue. Because, and that's it. That's the only reason I'm going to do it. It's for class sizes and to make sure that we don't have some kids in classrooms of twenty and some kids in classrooms of twenty, but also so that we don't have teachers teaching classrooms of twenty or twenty-nine and other teachers teaching classrooms of twenty because that's not fair for anybody. But I think that as a board and as a district, we need to reopen the redistricting process. I, I think that the whole thing, I was frustrated and angry and I have, I thought with time I would feel better. And I feel worse every time it comes up because I think that it was done in secret. It was done without getting community feedback and community input about what's important to everyone. And the elementary thing got tacked on and completely hijacked with some consultant's view of what we should do without our view of what we should do. And so I will vote for this, but with the understanding and the caveat that I want the district to look at the buildings that we have. I'm hoping that we'll have this assessment from the Alderman about what all the buildings need and that we actually look at balancing our classrooms across the district so that we're utilizing the buildings that we have appropriately, right? And that means that we're not bursting at the seams at any one school at any given time. And maybe it means that our community can't go forty years in between redistricting, that we have to do it every five or ten or fifteen years instead. But I certainly don't want to be doing it every single year for the next five years. I think we need to really sit down and have open meetings where the community can give feedback and really hammer out what we want this to look at, look like. And so having said that, God, I don't want to be the one to make the motion, but I will. I'll make the motion to...
I still want to speak before we make the motion.
Well, that, the way it works is you, technically, we should have made the motion first and then talked. Yeah. So no one will stop you from speaking. But I will make the motion to approve the middle school lines as presented. Yeah, not that last slide. We all said the considered slide is a no, right?
Yep.
Yeah, because that one's terrible.
The proposed July class sizes.
The proposed July class size updates, which for the record, I still think are terrible, but I will make the motion to approve them. With the, I will make the motion to approve them and request that the district reach out to each one of those families individually.
There's a, a plan for that? Okay.
I do, I want, in the motion, that the families will be contacted individually.
And I just want to say that if we found out about this information...
Can I have a second first?
Please, for a second. I'll second it.
Darling?
That if we found out about it on the first, today's the twenty-second, that that's twenty-one days and we said that we have five weeks, there's still enough time to change it. So putting forth a motion today, I'm still going to say no.
Okay. Ms. Gilio?
I just want to say that regardless of how the vote on this goes, I think that, I know that there have been a lot of changes to the middle schools, things that they want to monitor very carefully over the next year, things to do with their schedule, things to do with teaming. And I think that we really need to monitor every aspect of what's happening in all three middle schools this year and find out what we did right and what needs to be improved upon. I mean, I think we need to be looking at it with a microscope because we messed up or we wouldn't be having this conversation tonight. And I don't think we can afford to continue to mess up. It's our job to not do that. That's my comment on the whole issue.
Mr. Johnson?
I just want to back Ms. Raymond with the redistricting. It's something that we need to do sooner rather than later. We need to look at the entire, entire thing. The entire thing should have been done with the middle schools. That's why we're in the situation where we're moving a block here and a block there. Because, again, not in the board at the time, but we did redistricting just for middle schools, which seems counterproductive. It should have been all schools at the same time. That way you have a full McCarthy and you have more balance at the schools. So it's something that we need to get started. We should be discussing that next month and starting to plan what our redistricting plans are, looking at the entire school system.
Thank you. Okay, so I think let's vote on this. I think we all know where our minds are.
I want to read it first because it was changed from within the book. So I have here a recommendation to approve the redistricting of middle school lines based on the July class size updates with the understanding that the district will reach out to each and every one of the families affected.
Yes. Ms. Raymond made that motion. Ms. Darling, seconded it? All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No?
No. Okay, so larger class sizes. No. No. You said no?
I said, I said yes.
You said yes. I'm sorry, I thought you said no.
I think we should, that's a vocal. Okay, so Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Ms. Print is not here. Ms. Daniels-Williams?
No.
Mr. Claffey isn't here. Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
No.
I'm a yes. And Ms. Raymond? So unfortunately, that means we're three to three, right? Is there three of us? One, two, three? Oh, there's seven. Wait, one, two, three. So it's four to, four yes and three aye, three no, three no's, sorry. So the motion passes four to three. Sorry, I forgot how to talk. Or end count.
I did that, but I did that too, right in the beginning. Had to know my math was the same as your math for a second. Okay.
Feel free to mark me as having been reached out to. I feel like I know. I'm, I'm the first.
Okay. Dr. Andre, back to you.
So the next order of business is looking for approval of the twenty-four, twenty-five non-affiliated FY twenty-five salary increases.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Darling? Any comments or questions?
This is aligned with the non-affiliated. No, we approved NASIS earlier. It's not the same thing.
It's not NASIS.
It's not NASIS. So we approved the handbook earlier.
Add it.
Just any updates to the handbook and then this is the individual raises. And I don't know if Mr. Boss wants to give a high-level overview or if there's any kind of questions.
No, it's presented. I don't have any questions. Anybody else? Do you want to speak just because you've been here all night waiting for this one thing?
There's not much to add. It's the typical standard three percent, three and a half percent increase. There are a couple that we were, the clerical non-affiliated employees were matching to the, what the clerical union was, so we're giving them now a paid lunch. So those ones you may see a little bit higher on the increase, but that is that paid lunch that they're getting.
And that, that follows the secretary's contract?
Correct.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the twenty-four, twenty-five non-affiliated fiscal year twenty-five salary increase, just say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now we have fun topic.
Yeah, so we're just making...
Real consequential.
Yeah, just making a suggestion on moving the August BOE meeting from the twenty-second to the twenty-sixth, the following week.
It's the nineteenth.
Oh, the nineteenth. The, just for admin-wise, just myself and Mr. Gray are on the, on vacation that week before. So we'll be coming back and then a board meeting. So we just want to make sure we're adequately, you know, prepared and...
Did you say the twenty-sixth?
Moving it from one day to what day?
Nineteenth to the twenty-sixth.
We moved a week later in August.
But my calendar's already highlighted.
Yeah, so I know that Mr. Bous is actively working on hiring. I am concerned about not approving hires until the night before the first day of school.
We can have a separate meeting if you have enough hires.
Can we instead maybe move it a week earlier or like do something so that it's not the night before the first day of school?
We did it this year, too.
No, I don't like it.
It was exhausting.
And typically, we have two days that week before, like in the past, schools started like on the Wednesday, so teachers have Monday and Tuesday. This year, it's just a Monday. It's weird.
So I think we, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have the, I think the, the board gave me the authority to hire teachers like throughout the summer prior to a board approval. So the only things, the only positions that would be coming forward would be anyone hired than a director, so.
So we won't have any delays in food service or repairs or any of the other essential personnel to get the buildings going. I just want to make sure because we need our, especially new teachers, to have their orientation day, that day before our meeting.
Right. And then the, the week of the 12th is when we should have all of our committee meetings. So if we had that, that Monday, then we would have a really light agenda. And then a very, very heavy one, September, with all of the committee stuff. We want to vote just consensus. Is that okay? Is everyone good?
Doesn't matter to me either way.
Did you decide to move it up and not down?
To the 26th.
Well, he said not the day, it was.
But if we do it on the 12th, we have no committee meetings to report on.
And to Mario's point, he's on vacation that week.
Just for the hiring of teachers or whatever, right?
He can hi, he can hire teachers and we just, we, we do the final approval, but they can still start.
Done that every summer that I've been on the board.
Yep.
Are we keeping HR on the 19th or are we moving that to the 26th as well?
Oh, it should go to the 26th.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to check.
We'll, we'll take the 19th off.
I will be coming back from Ohio on that weekend, so I'll be here for the 26th, but I'll be extremely tired.
Yeah.
We'll keep you awake.
Oh, your arms be tired. You didn't say flying. Okay, so 26th liaison reports.
Oh, I put it away. You, do you want me to read it? I do, I do. Do you want me to read it at the next meeting? I mean, we all know how beautiful McCarthy is, we would just.
Yeah, I think we got the, really, the McCarthy update the other day.
Yeah, so I.
Just a couple of pucks left, they didn't stop.
You know, there's a few, nothing dramatic and I completely, I mean, I have it, I can read it, it can take another 10 minutes or we can.
I think your liaison reports, everything's good, it's working out great and we were all there last Thursday.
All right.
The next one is this Thursday at McCarthy.
And we will have the JSSBC meeting there on Thursday for people who want to attend.
I guess I'll have to check my email.
Any other liaison reports? No. Okay, so this brings us up to final public comment. Johnson? Have a lot to say. Pamela? I'm just kidding. Paula Johnson? Come on down.
I can change my name if you'd like me to.
No, I like Paula.
Thank you, I think I like it. I think my grandkids like it, too. Again, my name is Paula Johnson, I live at 15 Westbourne Drive. Boy, would this a hell of a meeting tonight. But I just want to bring to the board's attention, last year when we talked about the redistricting and a lot of us voted against the first round with the Broad Street kids going to Penachuck, we didn't, we weren't happy and that failed. And then we were talking about the redistricting of the elementary school and I suggested we didn't do this all together at once because if we did, it would have been a bigger nightmare than what you're going through right now. I mean, I think we need to look at the enrollment, what's going on. You know that there's a charter school right on West Hollis Street that's going to open K through 12. So you're probably going to lose more children then at that point in time. You also need to look at the cost factor, as you were told on Thursday, about how much the city will bond now, 30, about $30 million a year. And if people don't understand what bonding is, it is a loan. You have to pay back principal and interest to the people who buy the bonds. It's like having a mortgage, you have to pay it back. And if you do it for 30 years and the compound of it, it costs, people were talking about again last week, about our tax rates continuing. It can be stable, three to four and a half percent a year, but when you take a look at people who are senior citizens like my husband and I, that's a burden on us. That's a lot of money to ask. And especially when you did the reavowal last year, when a lot of people's properties went up high because there's no homes, so people make multiple offers and you're going to get the highest price. So this board has a lot to think about. I would suggest you wait till that study comes in about all those schools to see what needs to be done. Because also last year, at this time, we were talking about Mount Pleasant, the cost factor. It isn't $20 million, it's going to be over $20 million because once you start going into that school, because it is an old school, you're going to have to bring everything up to code. And once you start bringing the wiring and the plumbing up to code, because that's why a lot of us last year, we didn't vote to close it because number one, we felt these students had to go through the system because they lost almost two years of their lives. So we were thinking about those kids in the inner-city schools especially because we felt they were the hardest hit. And also, we talked about the factors, the cost factor to renovate that school if your student enrollment population is going to start declining even more. I also suggested that if that was the school to close, that that should be turned into a community center like the Arlington Street. This way, it keeps the community intact. I mentioned that, I think, to the mayor, I don't know. I mention a lot of things to people, sometimes they listen to me, sometimes they don't. Have a good night.
Thank you. Alex Simola? Somebody shorter than me. Doesn't happen. Alex Simola, 6 Air Street. I, I don't want this to come across snarky, so I'm sorry if it does, but Mr. Smith mentioned that Mount Pleasant School has air conditioning. It does not entirely have air conditioning, that is not accurate and I want to say that out loud in public. I can tell you right now, those kids were roasty-toasty at the end of school year. Third floor has AC, and I put that in air quotes. Second floor has some AC, again in air quotes. First floor, like the, where kindergarten is and all of the UA classrooms, no air conditioning. Gym, no air conditioning. So let that be known and clarified. Thank you. Also, 364 days. I have been waiting to know what is up with my daughter's school and my future student daughter's school. Thank you.
Gary Hoffman, 38, Perham Street. I wanted to thank Rob Johnson for finding that March 11th report. I, I think that's kind of what I was referring to these past several months where every single month, every single board meeting, I kept asking about the same issue. What's the average class sizes? We said we were going to monitor it, said we're going to come back and then in May, so yeah, we're definitely going to do that in June. June came, one of my officers came, Stephanie Keating Beard, I asked her to bring it up. Still didn't have it. So I guess my point of this whole thing is, I hope this was just a learning experience and we don't repeat the past, you know? If we say we're going to do something, we say we're going to monitor it, definitely need to because a lot of the teachers coming out of that March 11th meeting were looking at those class sizes and saw the other options and said, all right, if we're going to be at 27, we're going to add teachers, we're going to adjust. We never did that and it was frustrating to me to come up here asking for those class size numbers time and time again and we don't get them until July 22nd. So thank goodness, we're going to be evaluating this with the ed, with, with our ed council motion. We're going to be, just like Ms. Gilio said, we're going to look at this stuff and this whole middle school plan. We are going to be issuing a report to this board at the end of next year and I'm hoping that when this district makes changes in the future, we will not kind of make the mistakes of the past, okay? So hopefully this can be a big learning experience and we will be willing to be humble and when we come towards the end of next year, if we need to make changes, let's do it. So, thank you.
Thanks. Linda Wallace, 207 Manchester Street. Okay, so I just want to give a few comments to tonight's meeting. Class size is not the only measure of equity and it's problematic that so many of you stuck with that idea and that that swayed your vote. Class size is certainly important in education, but anything in education is much, much deeper than one sentence could ever capture. So the fact that the district is not considering all of the other aspects that impact equity is very concerning for me. Numbers mean needs and demographics mean needs. The level of support needs to increase. You talked about failing students and I really appreciate that. We fail the kids when we don't offer teachers the supports necessary to provide quality instruction. Penachuck has become the school with the highest free and reduced lunch population and it would not be unreasonable for teachers to ask for supports when we find out that that will be increasing. Something that's problematic for me also from this meeting is that teachers are not whiners. The suggestion that we would be here complaining no matter what is disrespectful. This is about the lines tonight, but it's also about the fact that we've reached a saturation point with the lack of support that we are given to be successful in the classroom. That is why when there's a conversation about one or two students added to a roster, it becomes so passionate because every one or two students means so much more than the numbers on your page. It's the lack of support for the needs of the additional students that, that we need and that is not there. That negative attitude about teachers puts the lack of, plus the lack of support is why we are losing teachers. In this middle school transition, we built a new school and we closed a new school, we eliminated an English class, we eliminated 22 teachers, we reassigned 16 teachers, reteamed all of the teachers, had us pack up our rooms, move our rooms, and then we were being asked to go to a six-period day with new teammates that we've never worked with and more students. In addition, you are changing curriculum and pacing expectations and adding new resources, which I am thankful for, but it is going to take time and effort to become used to them. So you have asked teachers to do unprecedented amount of things in this next school year and I've been here for 25 years, so I can say that with experience. So you are asking us to do so much with so little. So it's not complaining. That's letting you know that there is an issue and now we will be asking for support. You did mess up, you said that you messed up, which is why I'm saying it. And the least you could do is to listen to what we need for support in the classroom. We are here for the sole reason for making sure kids get a quality education and that does include equity. We cannot be expected to do that alone. So conversations need to be had about hiring practices, teacher retention, student supports, student expectations and administrative expectations. This should not fall solely on teachers, which it does currently. No matter where you put kids, in what school you put them in, we are asking for classroom support. If you are adding students to any other school in this district, teachers would be saying the same thing. This is not a Penachuck problem. So the support that we are not getting now is what makes us whine and the idea that our needs are not going to, our needs are not going to increase with, no, sorry, our supports are not going to increase with this additional line move. That's what makes us nervous, right? We're moving a line, it's not about the line, it's about the fact of what the moving of that line means. This is not about Penachuck, it's about any school in this district. This disaster of redistricting process should show you that we need to have more discussions on how to fix our schools in advance of them needing to be fixed. And that might involve listening to your teachers' needs. We will be asking for your support and not just your sentiments. That feeling you had tonight about not having a good choice with that vote, I want you to remember that feeling when Penachuck comes to you and asks you for help. We will send you a list respectfully of what we will need to be successful with our students. You have asked us to carry a burden with this decision and now it's your, your turn to help us with that.
Boush, it's been three minutes.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Brings us up to board members' comments now. I'll start over here with Mr. Johnson.
I think everything's said that needs to be said for tonight, so no more comments.
Daniels-Williams?
This was a real heavy meeting. I heard a lot of what you had to say as the president and I am going to think about all that. I'm very disappointed in the fact that, I'm, I'm just very disappointed and I heard it said earlier that these were our decisions, but these aren't our decisions, these are decisions that are brought to us by the superintendent. And I'm usually very supportive, but this one hurts.
Darling?
So I had like all these like fun things I was going to say about really anything fun, but the last five minutes kind of threw me through a loop. I feel like I missed something because I don't recall hearing anyone calling teachers whiners or saying they were whining. I'm, I, I don't know if I missed that.
I can address it privately.
Abs, thank you. I would say I know personally, every teacher I've met in this district has given their heart and soul and I know I'm incredibly thankful for all the teachers that I've had the privilege of working with so far. Days like today, I generally wish that every single person had the opportunity to sit at this horseshoe at least once to see what it's like to, to have these big decisions and to know what it's like to, you know, have your heart want to go one way and your brain is telling you, you got to go another. And I also want to give Reagan a huge, or, sorry, Mrs. Lambier, a, a huge thank you for fighting for the people in my community. My biggest fear when I ran was that if I didn't make it in, that nobody in my community would have a voice. And I know Ms. Bishop is a social worker, it's not just a hat, that's just, it's part of who you are. But it's, it's really nice hearing my community defend it that way, so thank you. That's it.
Gilio?
I have no comment.
Raymond?
Well, jeez, it's hard to follow that up. I just want to mention because we're not going to meet again until the 26th now, that Nashua Goes Back to School Night is on August 22nd at the library at 5:30.
5:00 to 6:30.
Five, 5:00 to 6:30. Come early, the parking is a nightmare because everyone goes. I really encourage everyone to go and meet your principals and assistant principals, the high school teams will be there, all of our community partners will be there. But I also wanted to highlight the Nashua Supichin and Shelter's Backpack Program. They typically collect supplies and give out hundreds of backpacks full of school supplies every year to our students and they have not started their collection yet, but it's usually the last week in July, the first week in August and all the information will be on their website. So if you are able to buy extra school supplies, please consider doing so and donating it because we have a lot of needy families in our district.
Here?
No comment, thanks.
Yeah, I was going to remind everybody about the Back to School Night, but I, I again, and I know, I know I say this at the end of a lot of our meetings where we have lots of differing opinions and, and lots of strong, passionate. where we have lots of differing opinions and lots of strong, passionate feelings that are associated with them, is I am always just so unbelievably proud of this board for being able to have these conversations where we really are making huge differences in people's lives and we're able to have these conversations with respect and with dignity and we're able to, you know, we're talking across, but we're not talking past each other. We're talking to each other. I think it's a skill that, that not every board has and I am very proud of us that we have been able to cultivate that, even when it's decisions that leave us, you know, going home and feeling bad. I think we all know that we have a good team that we can trust and have conversations with and we can disagree, but with some respect for each other. So I'm always proud to be part of these conversations, even if they are, they don't end up in our favor. But anyway, thank you guys for participating in this conversation. I look forward to the many more opportunities that we're going to have around this horseshoe where we get to disagree and do it respectfully and with some forward momentum. So thank you very much. And with that, I will say-
I make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Thank you, Ms. Gilio. Thank you, Ms. Darling. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. It is now 9:15.